All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. Can I please ask you to quit talking? Thank you very much. This is, we're going to call to order this regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners for April 12th, 2022. And as we do, we begin our meetings with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And this morning Commissioner Kennard is going to lead us into it. So if you'd like to rise and join us.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today just, Lord, we're so thankful for the opportunity to gather again, to go about taking care of these very important decisions for our community. We thank you for the large public turnout today. And, Lord, I pray that you would give us the right words when we're speaking, give us open ears, open minds and hearts for listening. Lord, I pray for respect in the words that we speak and listening to each other up here and with the public. Lord, I pray that you would guide us in our thoughts today, pray that you would give us wisdom and discernment. And, Lord, as always, we pray that you would be with our men and women overseas in uniform and pray that you'd be with our first responders here at home, keep them safe and take them home safely each and every day to their families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Kennard. Could we have a roll call, please?
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 12th day of April 2022. In attendance, Commission Chair Ron Kitchen Jr., First Vice Chair Ruthie Schlebach, Second Vice Chair Holly Davis, Commissioners Scott Carnahan and Jeff Kennard, County Administrator Randy Oliver and County Attorney Denise Lynn.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could the motion to approve the agenda, we just need to make a couple of corrections. We're going to add Item C7, also Item E15, which deals with release of retainage, and also we're going to today delete Item E14, which we'll talk about when we get up in that area. And if it's okay with the board, that would be the motion we'd be looking for, is to approve the agenda with those amendments.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
The only thing that I would ask is Item L1, our presentation, if that could be moved up as well?
L1? Oh, your presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sure, yeah.
We didn't do it as a time certain, but just asked if that could be moved up after public input was done?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the agenda with the changes as noted, and L1 moved up to following public input.
Second.
Okay, so we had Commissioner Kennard make the motion, second by Commissioner Davis. Board, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Consent agenda consists of Items B1 through B13. Is there anything you'd like to remove or approve it in its entirety?
Mr. Chair, motion approved. Item B1 through 17, was it?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, and second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Any further board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that passes unanimously. It takes us on to, we now have seven proclamations, right? So we're looking for a motion to approve Items C1 through C7.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve C1 through 7.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebach, second by Commissioner Kennard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Doug, you don't count. And...
It's time for that interpretive...
And we will invite the Commissioners down front for the presentations of the proclamations.
No, I'm good. Ready, I got tissues.
We're counting ID numbers.
Six being the one.
Yeah, really.
No, it's five.
It's five.
We're hitting the two over.
I need it.
Can I have the seniors and RSVP volunteers come forward, please? National Volunteer Week, whereas it's by the talents, generosity and energy of volunteers that continue to be Citrus County's most valuable resources, and our community would be deprived of numerous programs, services and activities without the support and involvement of all volunteers. And whereas AmeriCorps seniors and RSVP volunteers collectively served 48,900 hours at a value of $1,395,609 in 2021. Whereas experience teaches us that government by itself could not solve all problems. And whereas through dedication and devotion of volunteers stems the true strength of citizenship. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim April 17th through the 23rd, 2022, National Volunteer Week, and Citrus County urges all citizens to help recognize and renew the volunteer spirit of Citrus County by committing to address the needs of our community through services, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you all for your support and acknowledgement of the outstanding volunteers in Citrus County. April is Florida Volunteer Month, and next week is National Volunteer Week. We are celebrating with a volunteer recognition event for our RSVP volunteers, and we're honored to recognize all volunteers in the county for everything they do for our community. Thank you.
National Volunteer Appreciation Week from the Sheriff's Office, come forward, please.
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation National Volunteer Appreciation Week, whereas the month of April has been designated nationally as a volunteer appreciation month to recognize the hard work, dedication and passion of volunteers and national servicemembers throughout our nation. And whereas every year, millions of Americans give their time and service to our nation, which is a testament to the compassion and generosity of the American spirit. And whereas Citrus County commemorates volunteer appreciation month by recognizing valued volunteers and the many contributions they have made to our community. And whereas it is strong belief government alone cannot meet all the communities, so we partner with the selfless individuals who serve in our community to make a difference. And whereas Citrus County is committed to encourage volunteerism and national service among its citizens, the men and women who generosity and service to signify aid in the betterment of our community are recognized and thanked for their dedicated service. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Animal Control's Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim Office's Week, whereas the Animal Control Officer provide outstanding service and public the week of April 17th through April 23rd, 2022, as National Volunteer Appreciation safety on a daily basis to the citizens of the county. And whereas the Animal Control Office are commended for the many dedicated long hours Week, and joins in saluting unparalleled services of the volunteers who have given countless of service they perform in serving this community and fulfilling their commitment to providing hours for the betterment of our community, signed by all five county commissioners.
I just want to take a brief moment, if I can, to thank the volunteers in Citrus County
the highest and most efficient level of customer service. And whereas the Citrus County wishes to recognize the Citrus County Animal Control Officer for their service, which is in keeping with the long and distinguished tradition of the animal control profession.
as well as the Citrus County Sheriff's Office.
Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim
If you guys are not aware, last year alone, the Citrus County Sheriff's Office volunteers
April 10th through the 16th, 2022, as National Animal Control Officers Week in Citrus County,
donated over 60-plus thousand hours of work for our operations, which is equivalent to
Florida, and joins in honoring the men and women who diligence and professionalism to
roughly $1.7 million.
keep our citizens and animals safe, signed by all five county commissioners.
So we kind of achieved our mission without them.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Animal Control Unit for the support
So thank you to our volunteers.
For those representing the Animal Control Office's Week, come forward, please.
that our unit gets from our commissioners, from our agency, the support from our community and most of all, from our shelter. We couldn't do our job without all of that, so thank you so much.
For those individuals representing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, come forward, please.
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies or disasters can occur at any time requiring law enforcement, fire or emergency medical service. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, fire and emergency medical service is critical to life safety, property conservation and hazard mitigation. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters and paramedics is dependent upon the quality of accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Citrus County Sheriff's Office's public safety answering point. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement, fire and emergency medical personnel, monitoring their activities by radio, providing information and ensuring their safety. And whereas each telecommunications officers have exhibited dedication, compassion, understanding and professionalism during the performance of their mission in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through April 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and joins in honoring the men and women who diligence and professionalism to keep our citizens safe in Citrus County, Florida, signed by all five county commissioners.
For those individuals representing Fair Housing Month, come forward, please.
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies or disasters can occur at any time requiring law enforcement, fire or emergency medical service. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, fire and emergency medical service is critical to life safety, property conservation and hazard mitigation. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters and paramedics is dependent upon the quality of accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Citrus County Sheriff's Office's public safety answering point. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement, fire and emergency medical personnel, monitoring their activities by radio, providing information and ensuring their safety. And whereas each telecommunications officers have exhibited dedication, compassion, understanding and professionalism during the performance of their mission in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through April 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and joins in honoring the men and women who diligence and professionalism to keep our citizens safe in Citrus County, Florida, signed by all five county commissioners.
For those individuals representing Fair Housing Month, come forward, please.
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Fair Housing Month, whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted in April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin and disability and commit recipients of federal funds to affirm a firmity, further fair housing in their communities. And whereas Citrus County is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health and environment are strengthened in diverse inclusive communities. More than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. Acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Fair Housing Month in Citrus County. As an inclusive community committed to fair housing and promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for our residents and prospective residents of Citrus County, Florida, signed by all five county commissioners.
I'd just like to reiterate that every April, Realtors commemorate the passage of Fair Housing Act of 1968 with events and education that shine a light on housing discrimination and segregation. Fair Housing Month signifies a recommitment to expanding equal access to housing. Discrimination in real estate industry is real and ongoing, and we, as a community, as community leaders, have the opportunity to be part of the transformative solution providing equal service to all. Thank you.
For those individuals representing Citrus County Trash to Treasure Art Exhibition, come forward, please.
All right. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Citrus County Trash to Treasure Art Exhibition. Each year, more than 230 million tons of solid waste go into the nation's landfill and waste and energy facilities. In order to facilitate the attention of our students, employees and the local community on the importance of recycling, University of Florida IFIS Extension Citrus County is in conjunction with Citrus County Solid Waste Management, is sponsoring the second annual Citrus County Trash to Treasure Recycling Art Contest for Citrus County middle and high school students. And students' artwork may be an environmental theme and be comprised of at least 70% used or recycled materials. The artwork encourages recycling and will be displayed from April 11th to April 22nd at the Citrus County Courthouse in Evans, until being moved to the LaCanto Government Complex for IFIS Extension Citrus County Earth Day, celebrated on Saturday, April 23rd, 2022. Winning artists, whereas winning artists will win prize money from generous sponsors donated a total of $395,000 in cash prizes would be awarded to those entries that show the most creative expression and innovation in their use of recycled materials. And whereas there's a hope of exhibition sponsors that recycle awareness shall be significantly increased by students and employees as well as community through the display of the thought-provoking artwork. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County does hereby recognize and encourages participation in Citrus County Trash to Treasure Art Exhibition. Welcome to special showing of entries and commend the sponsors for promoting this extraordinary project in our local community, signed by all five county commissioners.
Okay, so thank you for that proclamation. So we do have the 13 arts on display out in the lobby, so some of you have seen it when you came in. If you can please take some time and look at the artwork, and there is a People's Choice category. So make sure that you judge and vote for your People's Choice, drop it in the box, and come and see us on Earth Day on April 23rd at LaCanto, or we're inviting you all, please. It's from 10:00 to 2:00, and then at 1:00, we're going to give the awards to all of the winners, and then we will announce the People's Choice. So hope to see you all then, and thank you.
For the Minority Health Month, give your community a boost. Individuals, come forward, please.
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Minority Health Month, give your community a boost. Whereas Citrus County, Florida, a political subdivision of the state of Florida, supports policies of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Minority Health, National Minority Health Month 2022 theme is "Give Your Community a Boost," to highlight the importance of improving the health of racially and ethnic minorities by promoting equity, eliminating health disparities, thereby improving the health of all groups within our community. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted significant disparity in healthcare and outcomes for racially and ethnic minorities, and whereas racially and ethnic minorities account for the smallest portion in Citrus County, yet bear the heaviest burden as it relates to the poor health and outcomes. And whereas the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County has assembled a coalition to help a work plan to address health inequity and disparities in the county, and whereas the Florida Department of Health in Citrus County's partnership with the county has assembled a coalition to develop a work plan to address health inequity and disparity in the county. And whereas Citrus County believes there are more important long-term community benefits to be gained by working to improve the health outcomes of minorities and ethnic populations. And whereas community partners can work together and ensure that access to health and healthy living opportunities are available to all residents and community members. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim April 12th, 2022, as Minority Health Month, give your community a boost, and challenges all government entities, businesses, students, parents and residents within the county to participate in National Minority Health Month and health inequity and health disparities, signed by all five county commissioners.
And another good morning to all of you. It has been my absolute pleasure with six and a half years in this county to have this day, the first to my knowledge, that National Minority Health Month has been recognized. With that being said, with a bang and a boosting of our community, the George Washington Carver Community Center in Crystal River held our very first and very successful event. And health is not just a day or a month, it's year-round, so you can be looking forward to us announcing other events throughout the year and the years to come, because unless all of us are healthy, none of us are truly healthy.
Okay, we are now, I think let's do this real quick, since before we go to open to the public, Commissioner Kennard asked to move up L1. Let's go ahead and move up L1 now, and then we'll go to open to the public, okay?
Oh, okay.
So you want to deal with L1?
Yeah, very good, thank you. All right, so I'll do just a brief introduction on how this made it to our agenda today and what's transpired since then. I was in a discussion with Miki Thomason from DEP Greenway Trails, and we talked about the trail and connecting these pieces and so forth. He had a lot of good information about it, and ultimately, what it came down to was that to make the connection that they wanted to, this proposed solar farm that's in Marion County wanted to come, was looking for an easement through a DRA that's actually in Citrus County to get to a right-of-way and ultimately use that right-of-way to ultimately reach a Duke substate. Ms. Lynn and I had some conversation about it, and an easement through there just was going to be challenging, to say the least, and I suggested, why don't we put it on the agenda, let the board hear what the project's about, and then we can decide if there's a way to move forward with this or not. In the meantime, this is something that's not new. This has been in discussions, it was new to me, but I guess it's been in discussions with staff for a number of years now. But in the meantime, staff has since, as we just got an email, has issued, not an easement, they can't do that, but a permit, has extended the permit to allow them to go, DEP is going to allow them to go under the Withlacoochee River, and then ultimately, our permit that was issued will allow them to go under the DRA and out to the right-of-way, and then ultimately use that utility right-of-way. So I probably butchered a bit, but that's why we've got some professionals here to tell us what's going on. So if we could invite Miki Thomason and John Taylor from the company that I believe is developing the solar farm, and then we've actually, we've got Commissioner Bryant is here from Marion County as well. They've been far more involved with this than what we have, but these are the folks that I thought could give us some more information about it.
Okay, do you have any idea the length of the presentation?
I think I told them maybe 15 minutes.
Oh, really? That long?
How about we cut it down to 10 minutes?
Well, I was going to say, we have a 1:30 time certain, and I did this because I didn't know how long it's going to be, because I didn't want to interrupt open to the public, so I thought I'd get to both those before we went open to the public. I don't want to rush you, but, you know...
The expedited version. Pull the pieces together, close the gap.
Okay, I'll go ahead and run through the trail connectivity and then any...
Can you get closer to the microphone for us?
All right, thank you. Yes, Miki Thomason, Florida Park Service, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon. Thank you. You can go ahead and hit the first slide, please. That shows the Cross Florida Greenway that I've had the pleasure of being the manager of now, from the St. John's River, okay, it doesn't point on the screen, but basically from the St. John's River all the way across here in the northern Citrus County and the Gulf of Mexico. It was mainly comprised of the former Cross Florida Barge Canal Project. You're familiar, we have trails here in northern Citrus County up on the Barge Canal. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you spoke at an event a couple of weeks ago. Thank you for your positive comments about when we got the Withlacoochee State Trail connected to the Dunellen Trail. But this is a greenway that I oversee, and it's considered a super connector in a statewide vision of interconnected trails for both recreation and conservation purposes. Next slide, please, sir. This shows the numbers on visitation. The Greenway is the number one most visited state park of 175 state parks and trails with over 3.3 million estimated visitors last fiscal year. So a huge number of people, more than double the number two state park. Next slide, please. With that visitation, they have formulas, and the Greenway had over $265 million in primary and secondary economic benefits to the communities that it traverses through and people doing extensive forms of recreation on it. Next slide, please, sir. We also work with Citrus County quite a bit. This is a boat ramp facility where we've done a long-term lease with you all to have that developed. I'm being told by staff that it's supposed to start construction later this year, so we're very excited about that project. We're working with you all. Also have some reef materials stored on some of our property west of this site, but appreciate the partnerships we have. This slide shows the colored outer loop you see on the screen. That's the Heart of Florida Loop, and the Heart of Florida Loop is a huge regional trail that will connect and eliminate gaps in existing trails to get all this hooked up as soon as is feasible, and you can see Lake Apopka down there on the southern end, so that goes all the way down towards Orlando. The Greenway comprises the northwestern part of that, basically from Silver Springs over to the Dunellen area. Next slide, please, sir. Okay, this is a zoom in of the western part of the Greenway in the Dunellen area, and basically in the area where we have the Dunellen Trail with the bridge over the Withlacoochee River that connects now to the Withlacoochee State Trail, and kind of, excuse me, focal area of where this project we're discussing today is supposed to occur. Yes, sir. Okay, this is, this map here where you have the two red parcels, that's actually property owned by the state and that extends into a private parcel. We have a gap that we refer to as the folks cannon gap in the Greenway. It's the only gap between Ocala and Dunellen in the Greenway, and we've been trying to resolve that gap for over 30 years. Commissioner Bryant here has been in Marion County, significantly involved with that, meeting with the family that owns the property. We've been through negotiations and attempts to do property exchanges with them for close to 30 years now, unsuccessfully, unfortunately. They're very nice people, but we haven't been able to come to a resolution. And the blue highlighted, I'm sorry, if you can go back, the blue highlighted property to the south and west of the red parcels is what was known as the Stabola Property, now Kingston. Kingston LLC. Next slide, please. Okay, and the Kingston LLC property is proposed for a potential solar farm project, which Mr. Taylor's here to represent, and the red alignment you see on that map is actually proposed trail alignment from the Pruitt Trailhead on Southwest Florida Water Management District property, down through their property onto the Kingston LLC property where the solar farm is proposed to be located. And then that would basically get us around this three-decade-old gap that we've unsuccessfully been able to negotiate with the private landowners over the past several decades. Next, please. And then this is a slide showing the proposed routing of the transmission line from the solar farm, from the Kingston LLC property, basically jacking and boring the transmission line under the Withlacoochee River, popping up on a small piece of DEP Greenway property on the southern side of the river, on the Citrus County side, and then traversing through the DRA that Commissioner Kennard mentioned, and then working its way back to the Duke Energy Station that they were told they needed to hook into with the solar farm project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I had sent a presentation as well to share.
I think that's what you distributed, we distributed to all the commissioners.
Maybe while that's coming up, I'll jump in. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's John Taylor, representing Renewable Management Services, who's the development company for Solar Florida 2018 LLC. We're a development company out of Riviera Beach, Florida. We have many projects around the U.S. I've been in solar myself for 16 years, focused on utility-scale development. We've been working on this project now for about three years. We initially targeted this location because Florida is anticipating a need for roughly 25% more energy generation by the year 2030 due to population growth. The farm that we located was 1,100 acres in total, which had a close proximity to the Dunellen Town Substation, which we knew had available capacity at that location. So that's sort of why we targeted this specific location. As I mentioned, we're the developer for the project, so our role ends when the project company has all the rights and permits for that company to start construction on the project. There is a final investor out of Florida who has exclusivity to this project, so they are Florida-based. I'm under a non-disclosure agreement to say who that company is. They do have already have large-scale utility projects in operation in Florida with some really tier-one customers who I think would give you confidence.
He had to walk upstairs to see if he can get it. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about the design of the project. As I mentioned, the total farm that's owned by Kingston Associates is roughly 1,100 acres. We're using 431 acres of that total property. The reason we're using 431 is that we've designed the project not to impact the environment in any way whatsoever, so we've done wetland delineations on-site, and we're completely avoiding any wetland impact on-site in that design. We've also done detailed environmental and threatened endangered species surveys and tests. It was found that gopher tortoise was present at the site, and we've been working with the FWC to come up with a plan of relocating roughly 30 gopher turtles, tortoises, excuse me, during the phase of construction to another area within the Kingston farm during the construction period, and then those tortoises would be able to move freely after that. And we're designing the fence so that there's openings at the bottom of the fence so that small animals can pass through freely. The design of the solar project is roughly 180,000 bifacial polysilicon panels. These are proven to be the very safe solar panels in the industry. It's not a toxic material. The main ingredient, which is 95%, is silicon, which is extracted from sand. These are encased in glass, and they'll be mounted on a tracking system, which follows the sun from the east to west throughout the day, and then goes into a stored horizontal position at nighttime. The max height in the mornings, or at sunset, if you will, will be approximately 14 feet off the ground. And the nice part about these systems is that there's very minimal impact to the soil, so we use a galvanized steel piling for the foundations, and those steel piles are rammed into the soil approximately five feet into the ground, using a pile-driving technique. And so at the decommissioning point of the system, 40 years from now, the machines can simply grip the piles and pull them out of the soil to return the land to the existing state. Thank you. It is a 74.5-megawatt project. The cap for a lot of these projects here in Florida are 75-megawatt due to utility regulations. There's about, I would say, 45 projects throughout the state of this size that are in phase of development right now. Florida currently ranks number third in the nation for installed solar because of, A, the need for energy and, you know, the irradiation. As I mentioned, we've been working for three years on the project. We do have special-use permits in hand from the city of Dunellen and Marion County. The project estimates the start of construction around March of '23, and would become operational sometime around June of 2024. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we're, we've done, you know, being a solar developer, we're trying to do everything to not impact the surroundings. No wetland mitigation and allowing the fence access to allow small animals. We've also done cultural surveys, architectural surveys, to make sure that there's no impact to the surroundings. The buffer of the project will be surrounded by an eight-foot chain-link fence with then a tree buffer on the outside with shrubs and trees to not allow passersby to see the solar project from the outside. There's no noise coming from the plant, and as I mentioned, the grounds are returned to the original state after the 40, 45-year term. Benefits to the community, other than the bike trail that we've already mentioned, typically on a parcel that was agricultural, nationwide, there's an average increased revenue for the county or the municipality of a 950% increase on the taxable income for a given parcel. Creates jobs. The construction of this project would be about a year in length, creating 400 part-time jobs during that phase, with 25 ongoing jobs in the operation and maintenance of that. The plant will generate 180,000 megawatt-hours per year, which is the equivalent to 17,000 residential homes' usage of energy, and that CO2 offset is the equivalent of removing 54,000 tons of CO2, which is the equivalent of planting 350,000 trees. That's a little bit of a high overview of the project. Happy to be here, I'll leave some cards and happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Kathy Bryant, Marion County Commissioner, 601 Southeast 25th Avenue, Ocala, Florida, and it is my absolute pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. As you heard from Mickey, this is a project, or part of this project that you're going to be talking about today. It doesn't just affect Citrus County, this is actually something that is a regional project. And you can't even begin to imagine how excited I was when I got pulled into the office one day and I was told, hey, there's a solar farm that's talking about developing on the property south of the Cannons, and we have an opportunity to be able to connect that gap. As Mickey stated earlier, it was something that I've worked on for the last 12 years, not just at the local level, but at the state legislative level with DEP, and all of the partners worked tirelessly to try to get that gap closed, and we just never could come to an agreement. So when this opportunity came before us, it was very exciting to me. I hope that as you consider what you're going to do today, you'll keep that in mind. Just this year, your state legislature has awarded Marion County $2.5 million in order to make improvements at the bridge at Blue Run Park in Dunellen, in anticipation of the additional traffic that we're going to see coming into that area from just the connection of the tunnel with the bike trail. And we're trying to make sure that we have a way for people to cross over the bridge over the Rainbow River into the city of Dunellen safely. So there's been a lot of work, there's been a lot of history that's gone into all of this, and without your approval today for the transmission line running under that easement, it's really going to hinder that project and hinder that connectivity on the Heart of Florida Loop. The connectivity of just this one segment will give us almost 75 miles of bikeable, walkable trail all the way down, I believe, to Dade City. Is that right, Mickey? Yes. Yes, no?
Back over.
And back over, yes. So this is just a small part of the Heart of Florida Loop. It's something that's been in the works for years and years. We thank the state for the time and the finances that they've put into it, and we hope that you'll strongly consider all of these things as you're making your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kennard.
Yes, sir.
So you asked for, do the presentation and provide direction. What direction are you looking to provide?
Well, at the time, the, what I thought that we were going to need is this board to give direction to staff as to whether or not to grant the easement, or what type of vehicle could be used to get under this DRA. And in the meantime, in working with legal, staff, engineering has utilized the vehicle they're using, is extending that right-of-way permit through the DRA. So they won't actually be getting an easement, but the permit will cover going under that DRA. So this board really doesn't have to do anything at this point. They've been, my understanding is, based on the email that we got this morning, the permit has been issued, and they're clear to do their thing. I didn't, you know, it was, it's been, it's been in the works, as you all know, through last week, and once we got down to late on Friday, you know, had this been addressed at an earlier time during the week, I probably would have just pulled it from the agenda so that saved their time and saved our time, but when it came right down to the wire, I thought it would be best to go ahead and keep the presentation on here so that we all at least have the same information that we're dealing with. You know, when people are calling wanting to know what's going on, because we, I don't know about y'all, but I hadn't heard anything about this, but at least now, I wanted us all to have the information, the same information. So we don't have to take any action on it, it was just informational for us and the folks in Citrus County.
Well, I would like to say thank you all. I don't think it was a waste of your time, it was highly informative, I'm glad the citizens got to hear it, and it is quite exciting, and nothing like an overnight success that takes 12 years to make happen, right? That's what we, that's what I keep talking about.
And it certainly was fun to be on this side of it. This side of the podium, especially watching you do your proclamations today.
Well, we're just getting started, so you're welcome to stick around as much as you want. Well, so, board, no questions for the presenters? We're good? Okay, well, thank you all so much, we really appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my intention was, and we have another, we have a 1:30 presentation, and I didn't want to disrupt Open to the Public, so as soon as we finish this presentation, we're going to go uninterrupted through Open to the Public, okay? So, are we ready for the presentation of certificate of achievement?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Administrator, who is a big part of this. My name is Angela Vick, I am the elected clerk of court here in Citrus County, and I am honored today to introduce my colleague, Ken Burke, for the presentation of the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Ken is my clerk to the south in Pinellas County. He was elected in 2004 and then re-elected unopposed in 2008, 2012, and 2016. And I, without further ado, please help me welcome my esteemed colleague, Clerk Ken Burke.
Thank you, Commissioners, it's good to be with you here today. First of all, Commissioner Kennard, that was a beautiful prayer you gave at the beginning of the, very meaningful, and thank you for it. And it's good to have my colleague, Angela Vick. I'm not sure, y'all probably do realize this, but she's quite a jewel. She's one of the most, if not the most respected clerk in the entire state of Florida. She serves on so many leadership posts among clerks, and clerks look to her for guidance and leadership, and matter of fact, she's the trainer for all 21 of our new clerks who got elected a year and a half ago, and she takes that responsibility very seriously. So you have, a person who brings great honor to Citrus County on a regular basis. One of the big functions of the clerk is in our comptroller role, is to produce the annual financial report. And I'm a CPA, and I know we don't get too excited about financial reports, most of the public, but it's extremely important, the document that she produces, she and her team produces. This document represents much more than just the numbers on the pages, it represents government transparency, and that's what differentiates us from other governments around the world. I mean, even in Communist China, they still build roads, do public safety, but there's no transparency. In the United States, and especially in Florida, we're big believers in government transparency, and the best way to show transparency is through our financial presentations. Every tax dollar that comes into Citrus County is accounted for in this report, and so it's extremely important report, and then we take this report and we digest it into a smaller report, which we call the Popular Annual Financial Report, that's a little bit more easily presented so that citizens can see a snapshot of the finances of Citrus County in a very professional way. And as Angela pointed out, this is a collaboration with county administration, this can't be done individually, but involves a big team of people who I'm going to introduce. But also, the certificate of excellence means that we've submitted, Citrus County submitted these two reports to the Government Finance Officers Association for evaluation. And let me tell you, it is just not some simple checklist. A staff person from GFOA and another finance officer somewhere in the country is assigned to review this report in depth. They report, they go through this to make sure it complies with all the standards of annual financial reporting. We have, obviously, your auditor has an audit report as part of it, but also, they issue comments on the financial statements, which go back to Angela and her team, and they may be just nuanced things, hey, this footnote you... and her team, and they maybe just nuance things, hey, this footnote you, it may be presented in this alternative style, and so you take these comments very seriously and potentially incorporate some into your next financial reporting. So it's an extremely intense process, and it's one that is more meaningful than just a little medallion which gets added to the plaque each year. Because if you have the certificate of excellence, and I know not everyone reads this report, I'm a CPA nerd, so I read these types of things.
One of my favorite bedtime readings.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. But one of the, the group that does read this report are the people who rate your county, the rating agencies for debt. And you have 101 million dollars of debt in this county, and the, when they rate your county, they look at this report, this is the bible what they use for this report, and if you have the certificate of excellence, that goes into your interest rate rating. And so you receive basis points reduction in your interest calculation, so it turns into real money that you have the certificate of excellence. So it's just not a medallion on a plaque, it turns into value and money savings for the good people of Citrus County. So it's my honor today to not only present to Angela, but I would ask Mr. Chairman if you would come down, and Mr. Oliver, if you would join us here too, please. And I'm going to ask for some of the great staff of the Citrus County Clerk's Finance Team. First of all, Chief of Staff Tracy Phillips, Senior Financial Analyst Susan Sullivan, Chief Deputy of Finance Services Shelley Sanson, Sharice Parish, Alex Fontanaz, Jody Wilkerson, Julie Pitts, Michelle Benson, Sheila Johnston, Doreen Budd, and Elizabeth Akerson. Just so y'all know, citizen, no bills are being paid currently in the county, they're all here. But Angela, you want to?
Yes, absolutely.
And Mr. Chair, would you come front and center, Angela, I'd like to present both of these excellent financial reporting to Citrus County and say congratulations to you. And now we get a good picture.
Lindsay has to get one, yes.
This will be on Facebook with Lindsay.
You know, normally, they send us these little crowns when we get the triple crown award. Let me explain just a little bit about, first of all, Ken, thank you so much for that tremendous, tremendously well-done presentation, I certainly couldn't have said it better myself. This is an annual, it's an annual honor to be able to present this to you Commissioners, because we do this for you. We do this for the citizens of Citrus County, and there are so many people to thank. This is not the Academy Award, so I don't expect to meet music, but you can play music, Doug, if you want to walk me off before I get started. Just real quick, I do want to, huge shout out to this amazing team that you see back here. Can we give them a round of applause again? This, you know, my name might be on part of it, but it really, it doesn't happen without their extreme dedication. And, and you just have no idea the, why, the, the effort that goes into compiling these reports on an annual basis. And you can see on the, the little medallion, the little crown here, that is because the county received this certificate of excellence for the financial report, the PAFR, the smaller one, and also the budget presentation, that I don't know if that's happened yet, if we've done that here. Oh, am I stealing your thunder, Randy? I'm so sorry. But that's what the triple crown means, so congratulations, Commissioners, you have an amazing support team here in Citrus County. Thank you again, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And when you, Madam Clerk, when you started off and said, and you couldn't say it any better, I thought you were referring to, when you said you were the most respected clerk in the, in the state, I thought, but I, I know you're very humble, so. Okay, well, thank you so much. Okay, well, now, we are going to go back to item D, which is open to the public, and we'll invite anyone that wishes to speak to come forward. We'll give you three minutes if you're an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group with a, with a letter on file. And while we're getting prepared to start, just a little update, because some of you have been asking, and some of you may wish to, way miss to speak about this later on, I just want to remind you that on April 26th, our next board meeting at 1:30, I believe, time certain, will be the library board meeting of the seven-member board that will do the selection of the library advisory board members. So if you're here today wanting to know about that, that's where we stand. So that'll happen at the next meeting, I believe it's set for 1:30, and so I imagine with 45 applicants, that'll be quite a process. So, also, while we're talking about that, just another announcement, because some of you may want to know this as well. What I've asked the, the county commissioners to do, and I guess we should get the word to the other two members, is with 45 applicants, what I'd like the commissioners to do is to rank those applicants, one to 45. And rather than coming in and going through each application and saying, you know, we could be here for, I don't know, 45 hours if we're going to debate each applicant. So this might be helpful in the same process that you use for county administrator selection and that type of thing, if, if we go through, vet the applications, and see who you think should rise to the top, and then if we can get into agreement about the top 10 or something like that, that should help the process. But I must say, it's extremely exciting to see, I think that's a record-setting, 45 applications for a board that has five openings at this time. So, just to give you that, and I know the Commissioners will give it total due diligence to go through each and every application, and what I plan to do is, when I talk about who my top picks are, I'll tell you why. And instead of just saying, I like this person, or whatever, I'm going to say, based on this criteria, that, that's what my selections were. So, with that said, who would like to be our first speaker? And if you would, if you haven't done it before you speak, or during, or after, as this person is doing, please hand the clerk a green card.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Sabrina Watson, La Canto, Florida. It has been approximately 13 months since the first time I addressed this board, and I just want to remind you guys of a paragraph that I addressed it with at that time. Americans are upset that history is being rewritten, schools are being propagandized, and elected officials are all in news and not in a good way. Many Americans have realized it's time to become involved. It's not only national anymore, and the only place they can do that is with immediate impact is on the local level. They are aware of the need for a hands-on involvement. We are looking for officials that will provide transparency, honesty, and integrity in every decision they make in our county. County assets are Citrus County citizen assets. How they're being managed is also certain to be scrutinized in the future. I've been scrutinizing this for 13 months, and it appears we still cannot get any transparency with regard to things like dollar leases, in which the citizens are forced to subsidize not-for-profits or nonprofits. Most of them are not-for-profits, which means they're, they can have a legal agenda, they're not necessarily a nonprofit. During this time, in that 13 months, we have exposed many illegal, unethical, and immoral people and acts of people in position in this county and on this board, and I, I'm afraid there's more to come. In addition to that, it looks like F6, we're going to establish a process and criteria for renting to nonprofits. I remember the board asking the county administrator to bring that back for more information. It looks like there's been a policy written, but it hasn't come back to the people. Might I remind the Commissioners that this little tiny, teeny, tiny print we have here is all of the organizations that the citizens in this county are forced currently to subsidize. Also, on F12, I see that we're going to establish a restricted account for a tax increase. Is this another restricted account, like the boat ramp account, the stormwater account, that we get offers to move whenever we need the money, such as the offer that was made in the January retreat? So, I don't know, Commissioners. It looks like at least the library board's getting situated, but we still can't get records requests in a timely fashion, we can't get them in a complete fashion. So, bringing it up again, and I'm sure there's more questions to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Dr. Paul John Reinhardt, candidate for State House District 23. In law school, I learned rules of rules and statutes of statutes. When Ralph Mizzoulo was running for State Senate, all five, yes, all five Citrus County Commissioners endorsed him in a photo op.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am, would you put that down, please? Ma'am, stand behind the pitcher. Would you, the lady behind you?
Does that do your First Amendment right?
No, we have a gentleman talking, she's obstructing his speech, so.
This is fine.
When he asks for it to be raised, it can be. Do you wish that to be there the whole time you're talking? This pitcher behind you?
Yes, that's fine.
Well, you should have said that, okay? So this is part of your presentation, okay? Go ahead.
When Ralph Mizzoulo was running for State Senate, all five, yes, all five Citrus County Commissioners endorsed him in a photo op. You could see that photo also. The endorsement appeared on the internet posting, and I made copies of the posting before it could be taken down. Ron Kitchen in particular was quoted by Jacob Ogles in Florida Politics in the December 13th, 2021 edition, as saying, "We know Ralph Mizzoulo to be a principled leader who stands up for what is right, followed by, we're proud to support him, and know that he'll be a conservative champion in the Florida Senate." That's the article titled, "Full Citrus County Commission Endorses Ralph Mizzoulo in Senate District 10," by Jacob Ogles. Ron Kitchen is a member of the Citrus County Canvassing Board. The Citrus County Canvassing Board is composed of Judge Mark Yerman, Chairman Maureen Baird, Supervisor of Elections, and Ron Kitchen, County Commissioner. Scott Conahan is Kitchen's alternate. Florida statutes infer that a canvassing board member is to be impartial, not endorse any candidate, it does not matter what position or office the person is seeking, whether it's the State Senate or the State House. The Florida statute addresses the candidate, not a particular position or office they seek. See the Florida Department of State opinion letter dated October 15th, 2009, and that was provided by Maureen Baird, the Supervisor of Elections. This is another moment for the board of county commissioners, because according to Section 102.141, Section 1A through D, a canvassing board member or substitute members disqualified if they are an active participant in the campaign of a candidate. The Florida Department of State and official opinion reiterated the active participant disqualifications as enumerated in the statute section. Of the six disqualifiers, number two refers to a public endorsement with or without financial support of a candidate. And since Ron Kitchen has publicly endorsed Ralph Mizzoulo in two different mediums, he's disqualified from serving on the canvassing board. Furthermore, Conahan's registered address of 10402 East Gobbler Drive in Floral City had a Nichols for Commission sign posted in front of the yard.
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you, your time has expired.
On the canvassing board.
Please follow our rules and our protocol. Sir, your time has expired, thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Dick Motley, I appreciate the talk to you. I'm a Florida Bar member who, two years ago, retired to Bluff Cove Path. Street's probably not familiar to you at this point, but it was just discussed in the prior presentation on the power station that they're putting in. Bluff Cove Path, when they showed the design of the project, that didn't point out is the residential street that they're running this line down. Now, apparently it's already been approved, so I'm semi-wasting your time, but you need to know the story anyway. He talked about, the gentleman making the presentation, about how they were very careful to protect gopher tortoises and small animals, they went to great lengths to protect them. This is a residential street they're running the line down. Project's been in the works for years, we found out about it last Thursday by accident. Nobody has been informing the people whose street this is going to run down that this concept's even going to happen. I learned today, it's 74.5 megawatts. I don't know what that is exactly in terms, it sounds like a lot. This line is going to run within 20 feet of people's bedrooms. Nobody's talked to us about it, nobody's explained what's going on. They're going to show up and start digging in our front yards. If we showed up and started digging in anybody else's front yards, you'd have us arrested. We can't do that to these folks. Somebody needs to explain to this neighborhood what's going on. Frankly, the, the real solution to this is not to put it down the neighborhood line down the street, it needs to go out into the greenway where nobody lives. I know, exactly, I'm not an electrical engineer, but I know that this line, if you look at the substation they're running it to, Duke Power puts this line on 100-foot poles up in the air. They're running this 20 feet from people's bedrooms. That, it doesn't, just doesn't make sense, and why didn't they notice up? They can, that gopher tortoises, they can at least tell the people that are involved what's going on in the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. For the next speaker, please.
Sir, can I please get his name?
What?
For public record, can I please get his name?
I'm sorry, your name again, please?
I'm Richard Motley.
That's what I had, M-O-T. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Kitchen, my name is Mark Saveska. I, I live in Beverly Hills, and I'm here to represent the Pine Ridge Property Owners Association. Our board president has provided a letter authorizing that, that representation. Pine Ridge is a community of about 8,900 acres, little over a billion dollars in property value, 3,500 homes, and we're the largest named community in Citrus County with about 11,000 residents. My purpose is twofold. First, I want to call your attention to a letter that was recently sent by our board president to you, I don't know if you received it or not, it's, it's fairly recent, it's understandable if you haven't had a chance to review it yet. The second request.
Excuse me, in relation to what?
In relation to the roads.
Okay, I received.
Pine Ridge, apologies on that. We also request an active role in the upcoming Roads Workshop on the 26th, to include a presentation on the, the conditions of Pine Ridge. So those are our two requests. I, I think it's increasingly obvious that we have a roads problem throughout the entire county. About 15 years ago, Citrus County made a strategic decision to divert funding from roads to other programs and, and projects. And now we all have a problem, there's a big tsunami of broken roads coming our way, it's a pretty significant problem. It's a county-wide problem, but it's particularly acute in Pine Ridge for any number of reasons. About 84% of our roads are either overdue or in the zone for paving, and they're getting worse. Last assessment, there were no roads in Condition 10. This current assessment, we have 28 road segments in Condition 10, and that tsunami's coming a little bit closer. Furthermore, the methodology used by Citrus County is disfavors or disadvantages some of the things that would help us improve our roads in Pine Ridge. For those reasons, we'd like to have that active part in the, in the workshop, to include that presentation. We can't undo what's been done 15 years ago, but we can change the way we go forward. We understand there's a proposal right now to increase the budget for roads from $4 million to $6 million, somewhere thereabouts, but we also know anything less than $14 million and we get further behind. So even with $6 million, $14 million, that tsunami of broken roads is coming $8 million closer. We're really encouraged by Commissioner Davis's efforts to, to build that strategic plan that will help guide some of the things that, that are the priorities for this county moving ahead. We're also encouraged that Mr. Randy Oliver opened the public session to that, talking about the roads and the importance of roads and the condition of roads. So we know that's on your agenda, and we know that's, that's in your view. So we're eager to see where those things might end up. In closing, just to reiterate what our two asks were, just to be, make sure that you are aware of the, the letter on roads that, that our, our board president sent to you, and that request for that active role at the, at the Roads Workshop. We thank you for hearing us today, we know, we thank you for your job, we know it's not easy, we know you've got a lot of demands placed on you, and you're pulled in a lot of directions. And we sincerely appreciate you listening to us today and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll address all these comments once we take all the public comments, so thank you. Yes, sir, next speaker, please.
My name is Barbara Olcasio, and this is my partner in crime, my daughter, Mariana Olcasio. And before I start with the short thing I wanted to say, I wanted you guys to know that road miles by state sorted from the most to the least, Florida has number, is number seven. That means we got a lot of mileage right now without building another road, a lot of road that we need to take care of. Okay. Now, I would just like to say this. The biblical doctrine of stewardship defines a man's relationship with God. It identifies God as owner and man as manager. God makes men his coworker. That's an awesome thing to think about. God entrusted us to take care of His. God entrusted us to take care of His creation in, I'm sorry, in administering all aspects in our life. Adam and Eve were the first, they destroyed it, didn't they? Throughout the years, we've done less and less to take care of what God has given us. We failed miserably. Can you imagine how many plants, fish, the beautiful pure drink of water we could still have today? It's all slipping away fast. We still have a chance to save what little bit of Garden of Eden we have, we have left. But we need to fight hard in unity. That's not just us, the voters, the people that live here, it's you guys too. All of us need to unite, take away what we have different, and stand together to save what little we have left. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please? Please hold your applause, ladies and gentlemen. No booing, no applauding, okay? Thank you. Next speaker, please. What? Barbara Acosta.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Gil Phelan, I'm from La Canto. Government, even in its best state, is but a necessary evil, in its worst state, an intolerable one. That's by Thomas Paine. And I'm just seeing a lot of intolerable stuff going on. It's pathetic, it really is pathetic. Since the stolen election woke up the patriots and we started watching, there's a lot of ineptness and refusal to submit your egos, okay, to what the will of the people is. It's very clear, it's very clear. Like the other day, the citizens have to point out, hey, having two citizens from cities is not really fair because there's other cities that are not represented. And I mean, that's kind of common sense, right? Why does a citizen have to come up, you know, and point this out to experts? And we keep here, you know, the wokest Rhino on your board, you know, keeps thinking that her will and her thinking on the library matters more than the will of the people. It doesn't. The chairman, Mr. Conahan, I have to say, listening to you guys, usually seem like you're like-minded and you understand what the will of the people means. But the heart of the matter is this, the delusional Democrats are an extremist cult, okay? There's no such thing as transgender, no matter what you cut off, no matter what you sew on, there's only two genders, okay? And the worst part of it is, we're made to pretend that it's okay. It's not, it's a fake word, it's a fake thought, okay? We're tired of it. At a previous meeting, you had a volunteer from the library tell us, oh, well, the kids can come up to me and ask me questions about the sex and the gender, really? Is that what the librarians and the volunteers are there for? Are they psychologists, or what's going on? Here's what it's really about, it's finding fresh meat, okay? It's grooming the children, it's pedophilia, it's indoctrination. That's what it is. And I'm tired of hearing people on this board, especially the wokest ones, trying to join the crowd of perverts. And all of you who keep saying it's okay are enemies of our children. You know, you look at the perverts at Disney, it's all in the open now for us to see, right? And who do you think you're fooling by putting the temporary stop to things for the display? Now that you've got a perverted justice in the Supreme Court who can't even tell us what a woman is, now you think, well, if we wait a while, maybe things will work in our direction. How clear do we need to be? HB 1557 tells us, "Instruction by school personnel or third parties on sexual orientation or gender identity may not occur." So you've got the will of the people and you've got the law.
Thank you. Your time has expired, please. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. If we could, if we could keep the chatter down in the audience, it's very distracting for us and the speakers, and it's also distracting to your neighbors, okay? Thank you, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, thank you, commissioners. I'm also here to, John Labriola, Inverness. I'm also here to address the recent article that appeared in the Citrus County Chronicle where Library Director Erichead announced a one-year cooling-off period on the LGBT displays. While we appreciate, you know, the gesture, a one-year pause or a one-year moratorium is not enough. We do need a permanent solution to this issue, and we do need the county commission to set the policy to not just make it for one year, but permanently. This is the policymaking board. But at a minimum, we're asking you, over the next couple of weeks, as you review these applications that you're receiving for the Library Advisory Board, to not just reappoint the same people who so disrespected the large number of people who came before them last month, to say, at least listen to the people, at least, at least listen to, you know, our community standards, or at least respect our community values, at least, at least respect, if you don't want to respect community values, at least respect parental, parental choice, parental rights, which has been discussed so much now, you know, thank God we have a governor that signed that legislation recently, as the last speaker mentioned, that bans LGBT grooming of children. The kind of displays that we saw in the libraries last year, last June, are now banned in the schools. So why should they be allowed in the libraries, you know? I mean, the libraries are used by all age groups, and there's no such thing as a, just, you know, a children's-only section in the library. Children use the entire library, and this particular display was in the entrance. So unless the children were being let in through the window, this is what they saw. But in addition to that, you know, the entire library is used by middle school students when they're doing research papers. So there's really no part in the library that that should be existing. If the schools don't allow it now, the libraries should not be allowing it. But as I said, you know, over the next couple of weeks, please look very carefully. We don't just want you to appoint people who are qualified in terms of, you know, fancy college degrees. We want you to appoint people who respect the community values and respect parental rights. So please reach out, please vet these candidates carefully. Please, please replace the ones that are there now that do not respect the public. And please reach out, please call them, look at each and every one of these agendas that are coming before, I mean, each one of these resumes that are coming before you. And it's not, now, now they're all on the record, we all know where each one of these people stand that are on there now. So if you go and appoint any one of these people that so seriously disrespected the public, you're actually taking a position in favor of these grooming displays, and that's what they are. They're displays intended to groom young children. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Hello, my name is Tiara Otto, and I live in Beverly Hills. And I am in agreement with what John said. I also know that your job is difficult, and I believe you're all good people. And I believe you're trying to do the very best that you can. I believe that it's not our will be done, but God's will. And I'm asking you to delve deeply into your hearts and really do the right thing, and let this be a permanent thing, that these things are no longer displayed in our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
My name is Diane Campbell, and I still don't like what's going on with the library and the laws and stuff. I know that there's other counties and states that are fighting the same thing. I know I was there when my kids were born, my grandkids, my great-granddaughter, and I know what sex they were when they were born. And I don't believe anybody needs to try to tell them different. If they were born and they have some kind of a imbalance hormone or whatever, why don't they try to treat that first, then to try to shove all this other stuff down their throat? Why don't we try to fix a problem, then to teach them to be different than what they were when they were born? If not, that's great, then go ahead and let them, you know, be their transgender or whatever, but leave the rest of the children alone. Don't teach them to do something they don't need to know about, at least not at our young, fifth graders or younger, or middle school or younger, they don't need to know that. My grandson told me, I said, why aren't you dating somebody? He says, well, ma'am, he's 17. He said, because half of the girls are gay, lesbian, or transgender. He said, I don't want to date any of them. So what else do we have left out there? That's scary, that is really, really scary. And if we don't stop it somewhere, it's going to continue. Just leave the innocent ones alone, and the ones that can't help it, fine, help them. But not by taking everything else away from our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
My name is Selena Keller, I'm a citizen, resident of Seven Lakes in Inverness. And it is, it's amazing to me that we are in a position now where we are talking about things that have already been established in the Bible. Over the years, we have, my husband and I have serviced over 30 kids in foster care that fell directly in this category. And I'm here to tell you that there is no way that we would support the library with this kind of information out there to them. As a veteran, I believe in standing for the flag, for what's right. And giving these people a year is only going to give them more time to decide what to do and how to get around this. And I hope and pray that you, as elected officials, will not bow to this woke agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you, commissioners, Joe Keller, I'm her husband. And I was standing there trying to think of some nice, eloquent words I could amaze you with. But the last five speakers have said everything that I want to say, so I'm not going to reiterate it. I'm just going to say that I agree with them. And please, please, when you do vote for this, that you use wisdom and judgment. That's my prayer for you guys, okay? That you use wisdom and judgment. And please, we're all looking for a moral compass right now. Our country's looking for a moral compass. You're in that position to give us one, and I can't say anything else about it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners, my name is Camilla Stevens, and I'm from Beverly Hills. And I wrote this on behalf of our children. It's my belief that the existing Library Board Advisory was asking too much of our children, too heavy loads, they're way too heavy for them to carry. They should not be forced as children to see and feel the world through the lenses of an adult. Innocence is worth protecting and worth fighting for. We need to do our parts as parents, grandparents, caregivers, and teachers to carry certain things for them until they are old enough to carry them on their own. I'm grateful that our libraries have canceled the LBGT month this year, but I truly believe it needs to be done permanently. It's really our responsibility to take care of our kids. I also ask that, as you go through the candidates, you'll carefully vet each and every one of them, and you'll look for people who have values for the children and parental rights in mind. I thank you for protecting the kids and doing what's right for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Cheryl Cushman, and I'm from Citrus Springs. And I just want to add a little bit to what everyone else has said. I'm asking you to make sure that when you pick the Library Advisory Group, that those five people are going to represent with people. That's very important to me, I'm a child advocate, I do a lot of volunteer work, and my heart is with children. I didn't know what any of this stuff was at five, and I bet you didn't either. I didn't need to know it, I had a very good childhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Have the next speaker, please.
Mark Conley from Hernando. I, in the interest of full disclosure, I want to let you know that I am an applicant for the position on the Library Advisory Board. I wanted to take this time to join John Labriola in commending Director Head for putting a pause on the LGBTQ displays in the library that created such fewer this past year. There is still a lot of work that needs to be done, and the commission has acknowledged that by scheduling a meeting to appoint new members to the library board. When I went to the library board's meeting earlier this month, I was surprised to hear Director Head acknowledge that they didn't have an adequate policy for displays in the library, and that whatever they needed, at least needed updating. I was also surprised that despite Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Kinnard both inviting the library board to make recommendations as to policies. Now, the library board has acknowledged that they do not have the responsibility for setting policy, but they had an invitation to make recommendations for policy, and there was a resolution presented to the board asking that Director Head work with a group of library board members to develop recommendations for a policy to be given to the commission. That resolution was rejected by a vote of 7 to 2. And I think, I think it's time for some new blood in the Library Advisory Board because their primary role is to advise this commission. And if they reject that with a specific invitation, they need to reexamine their views. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, commissioners, Janet Barrett from Citrus Springs. I don't know what's wrong with your microphone today, but you really can't hear if you're sitting out there. But that's okay, I put it down so people can hear me.
Is this three or five minutes?
I get five minutes, this is after our executive board meeting that we had last week for Citrus Springs. First of all, we wanted to thank Commissioner Davis for coming to our building so we could show and feature what we have in Citrus Springs to the rest of the community, because it was open to the community. It's nice that one of the commissioners actually came to our building. And she also brought Randy, so that was even nicer. And she listened to what we had to say. And we talked about roads, and we did talk about roads. I didn't just make a statement about roads, but people actually agreed with what I said, which is, if you allow the people of Citrus County to make the decision, and they agree to do a referendum, a referendum is for a specific amount of time, as opposed to if you turn around and put it in our taxes, it's forever. And from then on, you will take your hand and put it in my pocketbook and take every time I turn around, and it'll keep going up, it'll never go down. Whereas a referendum, after a specific amount of time, will go away unless it is renewed by the people of the county. And people realized what I was saying, and they agreed with me. The next thing is, yesterday on the news, Tampa puts 5.5 million towards roads, and they have a 75-year residential road plan. And my husband says, "Look at those roads." And I said, "Yeah, well, we're on a 120-year plan in Citrus County." And he says, "Yeah, I know, our roads are looking worse than theirs." So we're not the only place. And yeah, Tampa, probably the city, has as many residents as Citrus County. Okay, so it would be a comparison for population, but not for size and scope. Okay, they also, we also did some discussion on the library because that's one of the topics of concern to our residents. They said, "You need to start thinking about featuring Citrus County in the libraries, not monthly topics." And the suggestions they had for you were the amenities, the homeless access state park, Future Farmers of America, and things that the county does to improve the lives of our citizens to maybe keep our young people seeing what they can do to keep them in Citrus County. Not bringing one month here, one month there. We would like to see something that features Citrus County. We would like to see something that features Citrus County. You know, that was their, that was their suggestion to let you know that that might be a better way of getting around everything. It doesn't involve politics. It doesn't involve anything except featuring us as a county. And the last thing I had to say was Turnpike versus Parkway. I know you people are probably, you Commissioners are probably getting emails and phone calls. And the biggest thing I'm trying to tell people is you're jumping the gun. There are no specifics yet. And the thing is, residents of Citrus Springs are worried that they're going to take our houses and come right down the electric line. I live a half a mile from there. And I keep telling them, "If they want to come down the electric line, let them buy my house, and I'll move to another place in Citrus County." Now, what more can I say? The Turnpike, and we discussed this, will eventually get here, whether it comes to the lower part, the middle part, or it goes to Marion County. People have got to realize the evacuation of our citizens in the state has to occur when there is a catastrophe. And we have to be willing to help those. We're willing to help people with this, people with that, people with the other. These are our citizens. And I know people don't like the fact that I'm a pro Turnpike person. I'm a pro Parkway person. But it's only one road here and one road there. You learn to live with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me. Please don't shout out from the audience. Please don't, please don't speak from the audience. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just want to say I appreciate the decision not to have the display in the library this year also.
Could you give us your name, please?
Patty, oh, I'm sorry, Patty Kendrick from Floral City.
Thank you.
So I like the cooling off period, but I really think we need a permanent decision, some kind of policy that would cover this, so that we don't need any displays of sexual material in the library, because I just don't think it's appropriate, any kind of sexual material. And just because it's dressed up in pretty colors, I just don't think that, because that is promoting some sexual activity. There's plenty, like the lady said before, there's plenty of other topics. I could give a whole bunch of ideas for displays for the library that would be helpful for the citizens of Citrus County. And the second thing is the, the new Library Board. I think, if you really think about it, because some of those people have been down there for a long, long time, and it seems like they all have the same opinion. And it would be nice to get a variety and some new people with new opinions and, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please? Does anyone else speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Metz. I'm a resident of Citrus County for twenty-three years. In that twenty-three years, I've built three homes in this county, and I've paid anywhere from eighteen-hundred to thirty-six-hundred a year in taxes. I see you're paving roads in Citrus Springs again. Just curious as why we're paving roads with no houses on it? I mean, I'm seeing it every day. I can take you over there and streets and streets with not a house on them. But I'm paying twenty-four-hundred dollars a year in taxes. I don't see a county truck come down my road unless they're parking in the shade. Just trying to find out why we can't get our roads paved, the ones that are bad. I know you got a, you got a curriculum, worst of first, but you got to look at the people who live on these roads. There's a lot of roads that are in bad shape. I mean, like I say, twenty-three years, I think I've had one thing done in the county by road maintenance, but these roads are awful. I mean, can I send you my bills every year for front-end alignment? I mean, that's all I'm trying to find out. I don't have much else to say. I'd just like to find out why the roads that are getting paved and there's no houses on them.
Well, the Commissioners will respond to everybody's questions that they wish to respond to once we finish public input, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I've been here before. I'm Mary Cedar, and I have already said everything. You guys already know how I feel, so it sends to support me to say again. But I came across something that I think is interesting. Do you know in the Florida State Constitution, it states that marriage is only between one man and one woman, and no other legal union is comparable? So I think we should obey the laws of our constitutions and stick to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please? Is there any more speakers?
Hi, I'm Tracy Edgman, Hernando. I've been here once, at least once, before. And the first time I spoke here was several months ago, and it was on the very topic of the sexualization of our children. And now, we're looking at all over social media and everything that Disney is now considered a grooming, you know, entity. And that's very sad, because we all grew up with Disney, you know, not realizing what was going on. So bringing it over to the Library Board, and I, I wish I could commend the head of the, the library, Mr., or commend him for the decision to squash it for a year. That's all fine, great, and well. But however, again, like everybody has said, it's just a delaying tactic. And it does give people time. We know that there is thousands of think tanks out there, and there is, for every time you pluck one thing out, that goes down a nefarious rabbit trail, there's another one there to lift it up. You look at the CRT. CRT started out as the sixteen-nineteen project, moved to the CRT, moved to the SCL Harmony, and now alls you do is just change the name and tweak a little curriculum, and there it is again. And until you make that decision, you know, when you guys are looking at the Library Board, you do need a change of leadership. Leadership can't sit on the boards forever. Look at what is going on in Congress today. How many of those people have been in Congress for fifty-five and sixty years, and that's no different in our communities, our local communities? And when we don't respect those things, and when we attack the children, when you go after the children, every single adult in this country should be up in arms for going after the children. One of the statements that I made when I was here just a few months ago and spoke for the very first time, I asked them to stop going after the children, stop sexualizing the children, stop turning them into the situation that predators feed on. And that's all it does. It's all over TV. It's on the social media. It's in every cartoon. Sesame Street has turned into this agenda as well. It's got to stop. There is a moral high ground. God does not make mistakes. And that's all I hear from this, is God made me this way. Well, show me in the Bible where God made you that way. Show me the science. Please. And if you can show that to me, and you can prove it to me, then maybe I can look at it from a different perspective. You say you're a Christian, then behave like a Christian and believe what the Bible tells you, number one, and take the moral high ground. Please. So when you're deciding that Library Board out there, as somebody mentioned, it doesn't take a college degree to have common sense. And in fact, I think it is showing that the higher the college degree is, the less common sense you have.
Thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Marty Little. I live at eighteen-thirty-three North Gibson Point. Wow. I came here to talk about the shelter. I have concerns, since we've been moving on and trying to get things going for the shelter, that there has been word out that some of you would like to change your minds. I hope that's just rumor. People talk, "We don't need this for the animals." Well, you know what? What about the people that work there? What about the employees that are subject to danger every day, having to work in those conditions at a non-functional place with dangerous animals from time to time? We have way too many animals there. For goodness sakes, the employees can't even eat in the break room. They sit on the floor and eat because there's animals in their break room. The director doesn't have an office anymore because there are animals in her office. The roof was leaking the other day when I walked in. How bad do things have to get? How long are you going to just continue to kick this can down the road? It is not their fault. If you want to treat your employees correctly, and you want to have people come to work, and let me tell you, you have a kick butt staff over there, starting with the director and the veterinarian over there. Things have turned around there. It is a wonderful place. They do so many good things for so many animals and so many people. They help a lot of people there. And it's about time that the public knows that. It's a joy to go over there and work hard. The employees, they work their butts off, but they're happy, and they're glad to do it. And they need your help. They can't continue to, when it, it's going to be a hundred degrees soon, they'll be working in that shelter at a hundred degrees with a noise decibel level that'll probably give them hearing loss. You know, come on. So I hope those of you that are, that are thinking about changing your mind, it's not just about the animals, it's about your, your employees. For God's sake, if you want to keep them. And we've got good people now. We want to keep them. The second thing I have to say about the library, I never heard so much hate in my entire life. And you know what? If that's what being Christian, and that's what the Bible is about, then you ought to take the Bibles out of school, because I don't want children learning this hate. And it's really been disgusting listening to you people. And yeah, I'm one of those Disney perverts, okay? There. I've been before this board on this matter before. Some of you know me. It is really embarrassing to be a part of a county that has so many people that are concerned about a couple books that are put up in a corner of a library for people to read.
Thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
My name's Anne Madonna. I live in Crystal River. I've been here about five years, and I haven't experienced much on the up and up around here. I was a single parent raising three daughters. I took them, because I couldn't afford to take them to a movie. It was just too expensive, okay? I worked two and three jobs, and actually helped my daughter with one of her jobs. So it was actually a fourth job I was helping with to maintain things. So I took my children to the library. And when I go there, I am responsible for my children to the age of eighteen years old. Well, if that's the case, you let me raise them in morality. Each individual, you can live your life any way you want. I love each and want every one of you, even the ones that have harmed me. And I didn't really expect to do this today, but I am a survivor, not a victim. I am a survivor of pretty grotesque childhood abuse. And I'll tell you what, maybe we can take some of these funds and build a little place for children that have been abused. But I'll tell you what, they're too precious, they're too little at that age to have that kind of crap shoved at them. You guys can live your life any way you want, but do the right thing for the children that people like me and single fathers had raised children alone, couldn't take them to parks. In Disney, we went to the library to learn. Thank God for Florida and the Bright Futures Scholarship. All three of my girls, Bright Futures, National Honor Society, Ambassador for PHCC, went to Australia. This is all from a hard-working mom that worked three jobs, gave them moral compasses. And I told them, "You treat a janitor like you treat the principal. Do the right thing, guys. History. You want to be on the right side of history on this one." And there's a lot of people that are going to get down on their knees and start repenting. I can tell you that right now. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you.
Do the right thing.
Thank you very much. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Bonnie Wilder from Hernando. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The present Library Board Advisory Board, as best I can figure out, may have voted eight members in favor of the library LGBT displays and one opposed. Many of your constituents have addressed this lopsidedness of the existing board, and on behalf of parents of children, the parents who are working today and can't be here, we're hoping that there will be a more equal membership of this board when you make your decision. And it will be one concerned with healthy development rather than one that is divisive and politically potentially harmful on sexuality issues that young children's brains and emotions cannot possibly process at such tender ages. Before graduating from college back in the nineteen-sixties and heading into a thirty-year teaching career, we were required to take child and adolescent psychology. I remember that Freud and all the others accepted as fact that there is a sexual latency period naturally universal to all children in order that, in their years before puberty, they're learning social skills and education knowledge and everything that's age-appropriate that will be necessary to make them healthy and happy adults. However, we also learned that if this natural development process is interrupted or assaulted by anyone with harmful information, pornography, or if the children experienced unhealthy or even dangerous molestations, then their brains will permanently change. They can be hooked on pornography and easily accept anything that awakens them sexually before their bodies and minds are really ready for all of this change in adolescence. This can include one-sided ideological library displays as well as pornography and molestation by adults or by other children. I hope that the applicants that you approve will keep these facts paramount in your minds and that your future decisions will help to reconsider the children are not ready for LGBT displays. Finally, parents' rights is going to be a burning issue all over the country, and I hope you will respect all parents' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Commissioners, hello. Thank you for this time. My name is Leah Ashley. I'm a resident of Inverness. I've only been here four years, but it's been a rather interesting run. I give you a little background on me. I'm retired. I moved here because I love this county. There's, this is, I've lived in two other counties. I do have a background in animals. I am FEMA-certified in disaster animal relief, large and small. So I come to you today about the shelter, okay? We all know the population's increasing. Can't miss it. All you got to do is drive around, see all the construction. It's obvious. More people, more pets, more needs. This Animal Services needs help. It needs a lot of help. It needs shelters, because we're going to have a lot more pets. How many times do you go online and somebody says, "I found a dog"? The first thing they tell you? Call animal control. Animal Services, animal control serves the citizens of this county. The citizens need this. As we grow, so should Animal Services. Our workers, the workers at Animal Services work in really rough conditions, and you know what? They're good people, considering they work in the humidity, they work with unknown animals. They handle cruelty cases, which is interesting, because that takes time and a lot of effort on everybody's part. There's no place to segregate animals who are in cruelty, which is important. I've done law enforcement, and we've had to do it reports. You have to find the information, gather the information, bring the case, present it to court. All of that has to be done in a certain degree, with a certain amount of anonymity. Did I say that right? In order for them to do that, it's kind of hard here. They're working in a little tiny space. There is cruelty in this county. There's cruelty all over this country. This shelter needs help. I'm asking you, as a new resident, fairly new, I've been in Florida most of my life, to please, please consider the shelter. We really do need it. It serves the citizens. Your workers are good people. They don't need to be in a hot environment, humidity, no air circulation. They need something that they can work in, control the animals, and do their job, which they all do. The director's wonderful. I've only met her a couple times. The volunteers are fun, but they need help. So I'm coming to you to ask for help. Thanks, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Anne Finkelson. And first of all, I want to thank Holly for answering my email regarding the boat ramp fees. I'm not here to complain about the fees. I'm here, it was, it was the whole process, and I also sent some suggestions which have been implemented. And I want to thank you for reaching out to Francine, whoever Francine.
Well, the staff, yes.
The staff, to do that. But there's still, then they've, there are signs up right now. I sent you another email. There are signs up right now explaining the different processes of paying the fees. And, but there's still some issues that have to be resolved, and one is trailers without tags. There are states, and I'm, I'm active in the There are states, and I'm, I'm active in the Crystal River, the Facebook sites, and let me tell you, some people are brutal on those sites. And I'm saying, I'm not here to, to, to say, hey, these fees are going away. They're not going away. I said, what can we do as a group to improve the process? So, and this is where I'm trying to get, and there's trailers, there was one guy from Tennessee came, he says, "We don't require tags on our trailers in Tennessee." And I looked up and there is a whole list of states and some of it's based on weight and whatever. So we need to come up with an alternate way to encompass, so it's, you know, these people from out of state are going to come and use our ramps. So how do you capture the fee? And some people say, "I'm going to take the tag right off my trailer so I don't have to pay the fee." We, we gotta nip this in the bud before scallop season. So, so that's, that's my whole thing. And we need to enforce the parking at, at the ramps as well, especially the one at the end of Fort Island Beach. People go into the beach and they're parking there. And people who are paying the ramp fees would like a place to park. So that's really all I have to say and I, I, I hope you go back and look at this a little bit more and see how we can improve this process even more than it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to the next speaker, please.
Antonia Arabona, Beverly Hills. Okay, there's too much going on for too long. The authorities, what does the amendment mean? It means to amend things, to correct things, okay? So what's going on? There are subliminal messages in Disney channels for the little ones, for everybody. So why do they call it program? Because the programs are mine. So people are watching junk, receiving all that trash instead of receiving good things, okay? So it's just, I mean, I was, it was horrible. I seen on a flag foul language on the flag, the United States flag. What does that represent to the United States? A foul language is allowed? That's not freedom of speech. Leaders are supposed to correct things, okay? They don't have to be pleaded to, they should know what's right. It's so much, it's so horrible what they're teaching, their program, their mind, and then how can they be allowed to teach? Okay, teachers are supposed to teach math, English, science, good things, not teach them to go against nature, okay? And if you plant an apple, you're not going to get a banana, okay? And what do they do? They're murdering children, okay, because we didn't put a stop to it, okay? And they, they call it abortion, but it's murder. And so what happens is they use that money, it's all about money. So they use that money to sell parts to other people, to put in other people's bodies. It is so, I mean, how could people be so ignorant, all right? The United States need to wake up. God's people need to wake up. We need to put a stop to it, okay? Enough is enough, all right? So then, then they start, I just found out there's a drag queen thing or whatever, what? To drag people down to their level? You know, words are important. Amendment means to amend, to bring correction. And that's why there's leaders and that's why there's authorities, okay? They're supposed to bring correction, not that we don't have to plead to them, oh, you need to put a stop to this. They should, no, they should have common sense. You should have wisdom, okay? How can we allow wrong things, evil things to be allowed? And the little children, Disney Channel, subliminal messages from Disney, you can look it up if you don't know what's going on. But all this ugliness, okay? So Sodom and Gomorrah was destroyed. There's a consequence for whatever we do, okay? Nobody gets away with anything, so we gotta teach what's right. It's unbelievable, it's unbelievable what's going on because people are so ignorant, they're blind, they're sleeping, they don't read. If you read Proverbs, it gives you common sense, it gives you wisdom, okay? Everything is in there for our correction, for instruction. Okay? I heard the whistle.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. We have the next speaker, please. No applause, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lil Gilbert. I've been here for 50 years. I have five children, seven grandchildren, three great-grandchildren. One of our children is bisexual. I've taken everybody to the library on various occasions over 50 years. Never felt like I was being indoctrinated or any of my children or grandchildren are being indoctrinated into any sexual preference whatsoever. I find it hard to believe that there are so many people in Citrus County that are hateful, for lack of another word. My children aren't hurting you.
Please speak.
My children aren't hurting you. And I don't understand why people feel the way they do. I just want it to be known that there is more than one person in Citrus County that thinks the library is doing a fine job. I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with any of the displays that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to the next speaker, please.
Deb Spence, Crystal River. I had come here today to actually talk about a couple of other things, but it seems like we cannot get beyond the library. So I'm going to say this, hopefully for the final time, to the opposition, you lost. The board voted on January 4th, you lost. The LAB voted last month, you lost. And you're still not satisfied and you still think that there's hatred, but the hatred is coming from your side, not from our side. I had the honor of being at a volunteer appreciation meeting for the library this weekend. And what I heard there was something that I have not heard from anybody on the opposition. And that is that the library book sale, of which I have a book that I bought from there, John Kasich. I like to read different authors. I like to read different politicians to find out what the different viewpoints are. But $31,000 was made on that book sale. $6,100 came from the book sale at Homosassa Library. And I will ask if anybody who's applied for the Library Advisory Board went to either event. Because if they had gone to them, they would have seen that there's a whole lot of other books that are there that have nothing to do with sexuality. The library display is an inanimate object. What makes it political is how people react to it. And we need to pull back from that reaction because we have a democratic society, we go up for votes and the votes have been taken. The other thing that I don't hear anybody from the opposition talk about is that there are 261 volunteers that help out in the library system. These are people who no longer require the county to pay for the services. Some of them are educators, tutors, people who dedicate their time. These are the people who need to be on the Library Advisory Board, not people who are political. 13,000 hours were donated to the library this year. If you want to put a dollar figure on that, that's $330,000 that this county did not have to spend. Where is the opposition talking about that? Where are these people who want to apply for the Library Advisory Board talking about what the library does so well? The library is more than just one topic. And we need to back away from the homosexuality issue, from the display issue, which by the way, no tax dollar supports. As I just mentioned, with all the money that the book sales make, that's where the money comes from. So if you don't understand that part, you have no right to be on the advisory board. I would also like to suggest that anybody for the advisory board have a library card. That should be the bare minimum. Also, if anybody has filled out a card here, they should be immediately disqualified because they only have one thing in mind and that's homosexuality and that's no place in the public library. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay, we're going to close, public comment. While the board members here are kind of digesting everything they heard, I'll make a couple of comments in regards to some of this. First of all, I'll just kind of go and order the dollar leases, I'm against the dollar leases, have been, the administrator brought it to us and the board chose to take no action. So we can say, we want to do something about it and when the administrator brings it forward and if the board doesn't move forward, nothing happens. Everybody gets all excited and says, "We're going to do something" and then we don't. So I'll give you an example, I even asked the question, you know, a few years ago when I was elected, I, I made a big deal about removing things like the Key Training Center and CASA and those types of organizations, they used to get direct payments from, they still do. We've been trying to wean them off each year, a little bar, buy a little more. I said, "It's not the county's business to be funding nonprofits." And to me, giving a dollar lease is no different than writing them a check, you know, it's the same, same thing. So I've been against it. I haven't changed. Somebody said today about changing minds. I'll tell you one thing, you guys that have known me for seven and a half years here or longer, you, you may agree with me, you may totally disagree with me, but I very seldom change my mind. And I have not changed my mind on the $1 leases. As a matter of fact, the things that we have, the fire stations, we've asked for them to be appraised and in the board's direction was get them appraised and we're going to sell them. Let me talk about the canvassing board. It seems like some people think the only way you can win elections is go after other people that don't like the people that are, that like the people you don't. Is in 2000, I think the thing that was thrown out at me was in 2021, I said something, I believe I was appointed to the canvassing board in 2022. So I don't know that what you say prior, you know, to being appointed to the canvassing board, but I, I'll tell you this, I think what was said was that all the county commissioners supported that candidate, so that means nobody from the county commission could be on the canvassing board per that description that was read. If that's true, take it up with the supervisor of elections because it doesn't break my heart. If you don't want me on the canvassing board, there's about 50 other days that I could be doing something else, that I don't have to be at those meetings. But I, if the county, the chairman of the county commission is tasked with being on that. Also, while we're on that subject, we might as well hit all these things. When we first went through this, Commissioner Kennard was the county's alternate. And the interesting thing about the canvassing board is generally, you know, the chairman makes recommendations, the whole board, you know, votes on it or whatever. But when it comes to the canvassing board, I found out that the chairman of the B O C C has appointment authority. So it's whoever the chairman appoints. So Commissioner Kennard was going to do it and then he said he couldn't because he was going to be politically active. And then I think reluctantly Commissioner Carnehan said, "Well, you know, I'll do it." Well, since that time, Commissioner Kennard has decided he's not going to be politically active and so I'm going to reappoint him as the alternate to the canvassing board. So, so we dealt with that. And if you want to remove me, that's up to the judge and the supervisor of elections. If you convince them to take me off, fine, you know, that, that's for, that's for you to do. Oh, let's see, let's talk about Pine Ridge Roads. I just want to mention this because you talked about an active presentation. The way we do our workshops, you get five minutes before the meeting, five minutes after the meeting. And if you represent a group and you supply a letter that says you have authority to speak for that group, then you get five minutes instead of three to speak. So if your organization wishes to make a presentation, then I would suggest that you get it together and do that. And if you have more than one person from your organization, they can have three minutes to speak as well. So everybody gets plenty of chance. One thing about roads, very simple, this is another good segue, I'm not giving you a lot of things you don't already know, the issue with roads is money, you know? So if you want roads surfaced faster, you got to raise more money. The question has been about how do we do that? I think the fairest, most equitable way is a half cent sales tax. The people I've talked to, once they hear about it, believe that's the most equitable way. But the board would not mandate it, it would be a referendum and the citizens decide. If the citizens want it, then we have it. If they don't want it, we don't. So, but I have never had a problem with the citizens deciding, but the board has never wanted to move forward because the citizens we hear from say, "It'll go down in flames, just like it did the last two times, so why waste the money and effort to do it?" But if the citizens, you know, want to have it out there and we can do it where it won't cost a lot of extra money, I, I personally have no problem with asking the citizens, "Would you support this?" But you're right, when you talk about the money goes to something else, I met with the group yesterday and the first thing they said is, "Would the clerk of the court have control over the account? In other words, we don't trust you to take this money and spend it the way you said you'd spend it." And I said, "Yeah, we go in a restricted account, board to get a, a report once a year, how much was raised, where it went." So with that, and again, I'm hitting a, kind of the broad brushstrokes here, if the other commissioners want to go into details, they can. Let's talk about the library board and what happens. I'm going to talk a little bit how the process is going to work. I told you that there's, I believe, 45 or 46 or whatever applicants, I believe it's 45, and, for five spots. And what I, what I'm going to do and what I've encouraged everyone in the board to do is to go through and rate them, you know? You know, who's your number one, who's your number two and who's your number 45? And then we're going to have to have a process where we're going to go through and we're going to have to have board members nominate people and, and, and we're going to do this one seat at a time. And so for every motion that's made before the board votes, we'll take public input. So if you, if somebody, you know, the board nominates candidate X and the rest of the board, you know, there's a second and we'll hear from the public and then, and then we'll vote. But all the, all the members of this board and the other two as well should be able to give you a reason why they're supporting X person for that board. And I'm just going to tell you, my position on this has not changed. And that is, this advisory board, they, they were not elected. You elected us to appoint people to that board. So to say, "Oh, it's just, you know, we have nothing," no, we don't. We have a lot to do with it. And if the citizens, the vast majority of the citizens who elect us are not happy, which that's what the 45 applicants tells me, is that there's more interest in this board than there's ever been, then when we make selections, we need to demonstrate that we sat down and took, you know, some time and went through these applications. And if I say, "This is my number one," I'm going to say, "Why?" You know, and if this is, and if I can support another commissioner's person, I will, and if I can't, I'll say, "Why I can't." You know, so it's going to be an open process and the public will be involved. So if, if, you might want to pack a lunch and a dinner and bring it with you to that meeting because we may, we may be here a while on that one. Let's see, one point really was made about the library board is that we ask for advice and when the board itself votes to reject giving advice to the B O C C, then that does not mean it's an advisory board any longer, if you ask me. I can never remember a time on the tourist development board when, when any member said, "Let's send us over to the B O C C and we'll see what they think about it and see if we should pursue it." We never said, "No, we're never going to ask them to make a decision on anything." So that, that's what these boards are supposed to do. And also, I know it's getting late, but I'm going to keep talking, so.
I was just checking.
I know, I know. Okay, so, and the shelter, the one thing, when we get to the shelter, one thing I really am going to be curious about, and it will, just so you know, I'm going to ask item F under bids to be pulled separately because that's the basically almost $1 million request for designing the shelter, so I want to discuss that separately. Will, will it expand the shelter? I keep hearing that we need more space, we need more space, but the last presentation we got, we were told it's the same size. So I'm real curious, will it be the same size? Will it be larger? So we'll get to that. But, and everybody else talked about the library, I touched that, and road resurfacing, I talked about that. And if I missed anything, hopefully some of the other commissioners will pick up on it. So who, who wants to jump in there, anybody?
Sure.
Commissioner Kennard, yep.
Mr. Motley, I'm not sure if he was one of the emails that I had answered, but I did answer quite a few of them, folks that are in the neighborhood that would be impacted by this transmission line going underground. My understanding is that, that there's some type of directional boring or something is the way they move these, these cables underground. But that's, that's a process that will be used out there. And quite honestly, that was the reason that I wanted to continue with having the presentation today, is having folks up here to explain what was going on, what was, why this was going on. You know, I'm sure hasn't answered all the questions, but at least, like I said, we've all got the same information at this point. Let's see, we've got road resurfacing. Again, it comes down to funding. We've, we're going to have to raise the funds somewhere. It'll either come in the form of ad valorem, an increase in the military rate, or hopefully, eventually, I think a much as what, Mr. Chairman, what you had suggested is a much better way to do this is with sales tax. That that, that gets the tourists involved, that gets non-property owners involved, everybody is, is helping to contribute to get, to get our infrastructure repaired. The library advisory board, we'll be dealing with that in two weeks. And let's see here, Mr. Metz said that there are roads being paved with no homes on them. I would like to ask Randy if that's the case. Are we paving roads that have no houses on them?
Yes. Let me tell you the reason for it, however. It's, they're, the county funds from gas tax are used on the formula that was adopted by the board, which is based on a combination of road rating, if it's above seven or above, it goes into a, a pool. And then if there are 10 houses on a road of equal distance and one with nine, the one with 10 gets paved first. So it's based on density second. In Citrus Springs, it's a little bit of a unique situation in that there was a lawsuit and there are MSBU and there are MSBU funds that are used to pave the streets out there. The MSBU is paid equally as it relates to paving between the lots that have houses on them and the ones that don't. And as a result of that settlement, the precedent that was set was that they had to be treated equally, so that funding is done worst to first.
All right, very good, thank you. So we've got our answer there. And let's see, we've got folks made comments about the shelter, we'll be dealing with the design portion of that here shortly. And let me see, the boat ramp fee problems. I did see, Ms., I believe it was Nicholson, I did see her post on social media, very informative, and, you know, yes, she's right, there's some folks on there that, that just, you know, are very angry about it, and, you know, weren't offering suggestions for how to improve the process. She was quite the opposite of, you know, trying to get folks to offer suggestions to help improve this. Hopefully, we will continue to take the constructive criticism to improve it, and get, and get this, not only, not only the, the website and cameras, but also the, the premium parking app. I understand there's, there's, there's still a glitch in that. Hopefully, that, that we can get that addressed and, and get that corrected before the invasion on, I believe it's July 1st. Let's see, I think that's all I got, thank you.
Okay, let's go next. Mr. Davis?
To follow up what Mr. Oliver said about Citrus Springs and Mr. Metz, I just want to further clarify that there's two pots of money that go into Citrus Springs repaving. One pot has to go worst to first, the other one is worst to first bucket, then density is a second. So there is some, it's a split pot, just to clarify that. The dollar leases, I am against them. My understanding is that, much like the key training center being weaned off over, I think 10 years, 10 years, 20 years, weaned off, we can't just pull the rug out from underneath nonprofits from former policies. So my understanding is that we have put multiple nonprofits on notice that their property is being, the property that they are leasing is being assessed for value and being put on the market, so they are all on very, pretty short notice that when we sell it, they're, they're gone. So I'm not really sure why he said we're not for it, because I've been very forthright saying I don't believe in the dollar leases, I agree with you, Ms. Watson. The issue about the library advisory board, that was, from my understanding, I was not there, but that was misrepresented, it was not a vote about putting a policy together, it was an actual policy suggestion, and then that was voted down. So otherwise, I will address library issues when we have the library governing board meeting. Deb Spence, on that topic, all excellent points. Ann Finkelson, I think she may have left, I was just looking for her. There you are, you are my favorite kind of resident. You identify a real problem, and you bring, bring ideas for solutions, and you're nice about it, thank you. We need, you can't, you can't address this from the audience, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to give you a little shout out. Same with Janet Barrett, the plate, where's Janet? Janet, did she leave? Oh, bummer. That was a nice shout out from her to me, but I have to credit the staff for choosing the place to go to Citrus Springs Community Center, and I was very happy to be there. I do think the sales tax with a sunset clause is absolutely the right way to get our roads repaved. That way, there's just an epic lack of trust in government, some of which is for good reason. So if we go out there and say for four years, or eight years, or whatever it is, we're going to do a half-cent sales tax, and it's only for roads, then you can judge for yourself, and then it sunsets automatically, and you can then judge to re-vote that in for something else, or not. So, Mark Soduska, not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly. Pine Ridge Roads, we're about to deal with that. All I can say is maybe there could be a, perhaps a small tweak to density on how we do that calculation. I think the system that we have in place right now is pretty doggone good, but maybe a tweak to density would help out. Marty Little, if she's still here. We do have, I can't say what you said, because I have to be all commissioner-like, but I do agree, we have an awesome staff, and I'm 100% behind getting the new shelter built. And Dick Motley, I couldn't agree more on communication needs to improve, and that's why we had a communications workshop this morning on how to actually tell you all what we're up to a little bit more clearly. So, that's it, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Slidok.
Sales tax, the discretionary half-cent penny, I even talked about it in my campaign, it's a valuable tool, it can be used, if it's used wisely. I said November, January 2021, I was going to stop talking about it because I got so much pushback, so I'm glad to hear it being opened up again. Dollar lease, you know I've been against that from the beginning, but there, there are some people that have to be phased in and out. Paul, there was no photo op, I didn't, I didn't pose for a photo for any candidate, that was, that's actually our official photo for the, the board. Dick Motley, I don't know if you're here, but I am going to look into that, I'm very interested about what you're saying about the lines being run in front of homes. Mark, I, I got your letter, I read it, and I spoke with Mr. Hunter, and going to keep working on that with Pine Ridge Roads, Citrus Spring Roads, and again, the funding. Let's see, the animal shelter, I mean, you all know where I stand, but it's about, again, I was so glad to hear you say, Marty, that it's about our employees' safety, it's not even about size anymore at this point, it is about safety and what we can do. And we have, we've done, I mean, the community has given a tremendous amount of money towards this new animal shelter, so I'm very hopeful that things will continue. The library board, the library displays, unfortunately, you know, we've heard about this so much, and I've talked about it so much, the one thing I am going to, as a mother, I care about my daughters, I protect my daughters, sometimes it's a little insulting to hear, be told who people think we are, when you don't know me as a mother, you don't know me as a, you don't know my daughters and what they've accomplished. So, you know, I just kind of try to weed through some of that ugliness. There's no need to be ugly, we all want to protect our children, all good people want to protect our children, and that is so very important, and I'm going to continue to fight for the children. But I, I think that I'm going to, you know, continue to fight and make sure that every children has dinner at night, too. And I'm going to take away from what Deb said, and when I go through all the applications, which I have them in my briefcase, I'm going to look and see who has the library card. I thought that, that is very, very important. And I do, every year, for probably 15 years or however long it's been, go to, to the book sale, I'm, I, I love books, and to see the people that donate day after day, their time and energy is very moving, and that's, that's my takeaway from today.
Okay, Commissioner Carnahan?
I think you guys have covered the bases. The one thing I will say is the boat ramp, the fees, when we first started, I got my ears chewed off this weekend on, on some of the individuals that bought boat ramp fees from the start, because it was, you went by your truck tag, and then we changed it to trailer tags. So it will get your truck tag, and it will send you a ticket. So that, that is a good thing. So if they don't have a trailer tag, it will still get your truck tag or your car tag, and they still will send you a ticket. So other than that, I think everybody's covered.
Thank you. Must say, I'd take my son to launch his boat twice in the last couple of days, I thought the system worked perfectly, and he was kind of amazed that people couldn't understand it. You know, I mean, it's, you show up, you do what the sign says, and you launch your boat, and the people down there seem to be, he did point out that it's not the craziness it used to be, you know, when now that people pay to use it, it's not the bedlam down there that it, that it used to be. Okay, well, with that said, we will now continue to move on, regular business. Yes, sir?
Motion approved, item E1, A through G, except item F, we'll pull that in step second.
Okay, very good. So Commissioner Kennard makes that motion, and second by Commissioner Carnahan. Is there any public comment on those items, other than item F? Seeing none, is there any further commissioner discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, Commissioner Kennard, you pulled it, but I said I wanted to, did you pull it just to discuss, or you just want me to go and tell you why I was going to pull it anyway?
No, I think, I'd like to hear Mr. Oliver, go ahead and introduce the item, and then...
I can do that. This is, we've been, we went out through the Consultants' Competitive Negotiations Act as required by Florida law to select an architect slash engineering firm to design the animal shelter within the parameters that were provided by the board. What this provides for is kennel-wise, as it's currently configured, it's the same size as the existing shelter, however, it does have add alternates for several things, a cattery for one, a educational room, if you will, a pole barn, additional kennels, because it's made to expand this thing, and it's going to largely depend on funding that's available at that particular time. Currently, as you're probably well aware, the construction industry is moving along pretty quickly, materials are somewhat hard to get, and they're also expensive. So until we get the, you know, the, the price, the architects estimate a probable cost, or engineers estimate a probable cost, we won't have a better number. But that is the, you know, what's the gist of this, and at the time the bids come back, we can move those numbers and make the decisions, you can make the decisions as to what you feel the most important components are. So if there are any questions, I'm prepared to answer.
So it is the same size?
Same size.
Same size. So everybody that says we need a bigger shelter, the two speakers that says this is good, it'll give us a bigger shelter, it won't. Not, not as what's being inspected. The other thing, I'm, I'm just going to say, and I'm just going to remind everybody, I'm not going to beat this to death, because I know I'm on the losing end of this, but we are now at $986,000 for a design. Okay, so let this sink in, people, $1 million for a design before the first scoop of dirt is turned. And that's fine, because we're going to hear, all the community is going to pay for it, and no tax dollars are going to go into it. Well, if that's the case, I'd like to see all that money in escrow, in an account somewhere, before we start down this path, and we end up spending a million dollars on something that may or may not get built. Because you talk about changing minds, there is an election coming up, and I can tell you, people, this is hot on people's minds out there right now. People I talk to do not want this kind of money spent. The comments that were made to me is, why don't you spend this much sheltering veterans? Why don't you spend this much sheltering children? Why, you don't spend this money designing a shelter for people that you're spending for animals. And, and again, I'm just going to remind you, in the past, I said, let's fix the problems at the shelter, and I wasn't allowed to have that information. They voted me down and said, no, we're not even going to discuss putting money into the existing shelter, because we're not even going to consider it. So when somebody asked me, what would it cost to air-condition the shelter? I don't know. What would it cost to give the employees break room? I don't know, because the board chose not to even look at that information. So I'm just saying, based on the fact that we don't know what it's going to cost, we don't know how much is coming in, and we don't know what the final layout of this is going to be, I am certainly not going to vote to spend one, nearly $1 million. So that's, that's my position on it. So, with that said, you guys will have to make a motion to do what you want to do with item F, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item EF, E1F.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Slidok makes that motion, and second by Commissioner Davis. So any public comment? Please come up. Again, limit it to this motion, please. It's approved and authorized, the motion is to approve and authorize the chairman to execute an agreement for engineering, so, 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 for the new, design of the new animal shelter, okay?
Hi, I'm back. Lil Gilbert, Inverness. I could list all the warm and fuzzy reasons why Citrus County needs a new animal center, you know all about that. So I'm going to list the broken things, the missing things, the things that don't work, the space they don't have, the places where people and animals can get hurt or become ill, the things staff and volunteers deal with every day, over and above the vast amount of work involved in taking care of hundreds of animals, performing surgery, dealing with the public, and completing forensic exams on cruelty cases. Some of these things could result in definite financial liabilities to the county. Broken windows cause injuries, windows that don't close completely cause mold, doors that won't open or close completely allow escapes, those summer storms can flood the kennels, cracks and holes in the floors and walls, the open leaking roofs and cat adoption and the upper dog kennels result in vermin, mold, rot, bacteria, disease, and accidents. Old drainage troughs no longer drain freely, and they breed bacteria. Guillotine doors are used to move a dog from the front to the rear of a kennel. If it fails and the cable snaps, which it does, it can cause severe injury to the dog or put the staff member in danger. Narrow hallways do not allow, pardon me, for more than one person and one dog to travel through. Dogs trying to attack each other through the gates can and do redirect their anger and frustration onto people. The main storage building is being used to house animal cruelty cases, supplies are now stored off-site. This is inconvenient and not at all cost-effective. The garage, which was used for everyday storage, is being used to house small dogs, animals with contagious conditions, and cruelty cases. It's gotten to the point where the floors can no longer be clean, much less disinfected. 50 years of urine, feces, and blood will do that. The recovery and surgery suite are far too small, there are often upwards of six animals recovering at one time. It takes a lot of maneuvering to keep these animals from waking up all at once, from accosting one another, and those caring for them. The staff men's room shower is also the storage area for all foster supplies, food, litter, trays, potty pads, and the like. Staff lost their lunchroom for several months when, due to an influx of cruelty cases, the cat adoption room was moved to the lunchroom. They ate lunch in the lobby, in their cars, or outside on broken picnic tables, it was neither sanitary nor comfortable. Kennel doors don't always close completely, and they have large gaps. Dogs can reach through and bite, and they do. These are not minor inconveniences, these are problems that can and do cause severe injuries and disease. Yes, we need a new facility. Constantly throwing money at a problem, only to have it happen again a month later, is a waste of time and money. Some problems just can't be fixed, you just have to start fresh. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on this motion, please.
Hi there, my name is Rory Wells, I'm from Citrus Springs, and I specifically wanted to address the space question. It's not that the space is larger, it's that it's going to be of better use. So where they are allocating storage and break rooms and stuff like that now, the new plan is a better layout, so it's not necessarily the aspect of the size itself, it's how that size is being used. And Lil brought up all of my other great points, so I won't repeat everything, but the shelter is doing a great job with what they have, but there's only so many Band-Aids that you can put on the shelter that is currently there, and the safety issues are of utmost importance. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Debbie Hahn, I live at home in Sasa. I moved over here a year and a half ago from Seminole County, Florida, so I wanted to get away from the hustle and bustle, and I was able to use your animal control services. My, one of my dogs got loose, and I went there several times looking for her, and I found her, thank goodness. And another incident, I found an animal, and they helped me with that. The facility is, it's, it's not adequate for the amount of animals it has to have and handle. I, I mean, it was clean as it could be, everyone that worked there was wonderful, they answered my calls, you know, when I was checking in and everything. I've worked at Seminole County Animal Services volunteering, I've worked with Orange County Animal Services volunteering way back 40 years ago, when they had a facility half the size of what you have, and it was, there were people constantly getting bit, getting injured, chain link tears your skin, things like this. So those are the main issues now, when I see a facility that's, you know, aging and degrading, you're setting people up, you're volunteers, and you're... you're setting people up, your volunteers and your employees, for injuries. And they can be huge injuries, I've had several over the years. I've worked forty years with, working for rescues, private rescues, or volunteering at county rescues, and you can get serious injuries that can lay you up for months. And that's costly for healthcare that's provided for the employees, and it's costly for volunteers to get hurt and have to pay their own way. And a shelter is a reflection of a community. That's what it is. And I understand, and we have veterans that need help, but we have Veterans Affairs for that. My nephew is in Veterans Affairs. And we have other government, you know, big government agencies that handle other things. Not that any of those are lesser, they're certainly not, and human care is above animal care. I love animals, so I want to see it done, but I just think it's really, we have to consider. Living here now, I'm a Citrus County resident, and I think we just have to consider it for the people that work there, for the people that volunteer there, and for the animals. So thank you very much for your time. This is my first meeting I attended, and it was quite interesting.
Thank you very much, and we hope you'll come back. Okay, thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Bernie McDermott, I am a resident of Citrus Hills. And one of the topics that I think tends to be overlooked is the shelter's integral part of public health and safety. And I wanted to highlight a few, it's a lot of numbers, but I'll go through them quickly, I promise. The active TNR program, that's 923 cats that were trapped, treated, and released. Pre-surgery vaccinations. The clinics, the veterinary clinic has a low-cost program for residents of Citrus County to get their animals spayed, neutered. They actually have vet visits, all low-cost, available to the public. There were, the vaccine clinic has serviced 545 animals. The pre-surgery vaccination, 239. The owner's spay-neuter, 291. The clinic pet retention for animals that are seen and returned, 129. And surgery services of 46. So that is just the activity of the vet services, hand-in-hand with the community, public health and safety. Talk about population. It's getting to be quite common now that we have a lot of protective custody animals. It's no big secret, and it's not getting any better. But over the course of the last two years, where these numbers are coming from, from March 2020 to March of '22, there were 125 animals housed for bite quarantine at the shelter. And 231 animals have been housed for protective custody. Those intervals could be anywhere averaging about three months, almost out to a year, for case in point, out of the box. Which is the case of what happens when a rescue gets out of hand and is not accountable. Facility, you're aware of the condition of the facility. If you've been there to visit, thank you. If you haven't, you really should go as you move forward with this process. The floor traffic, if you walk around the shelter, there are pinch points, constricted areas. There have been severe bites to volunteers at these points. The lighting is atrocious. I don't know how it gets by, it's being disabled access. You could get to certain areas, but good luck, you can't maneuver in those areas. It may fulfill the minimum requirements, but that's all it is. They're the minimum requirements. The lighting is awful. You cannot have a conversation in the shelter area. In 2017, it got so bad, I on my own did a sound survey. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, time's expired. Go ahead, next speaker, please.
My name is Paul John Reinhart, Beverly Hills, Florida. And I had the pleasure of adopting a dog back in 1994. And the last adoption I had was from the ASPCA facility in New York City. And that dog died in 1969. It takes you a long time to swing around to get another one. But what I wanted to address was, they had these problems in New York City years ago. As you could tell, we would have a lot of dogs, the abuse and everything else. They were one of the first ones that involved law enforcement in capturing animals, stray animals, way before we ever did. But what they did, and maybe you would want to consider this or think it over, they had a survey done, actually, and I was wondering if it was ever done here, by the ASPCA and get recommendations for what should be in the new shelter, or what should be done with the old shelter. I mean, they are the experts nationwide on how to do these shelters. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. So any other citizen comment on this motion?
This is personal. Janet Barick, Citrus Springs. I'm not against dogs or cats. We've had animals long as I've alive, okay? What I'm against is wasting money. I know that if the roof is leaking, some building that the county owns, they call Facilities Management, they come out and fix it. If the air conditioner's not working, they call Facilities Management, they come out and fix it. Okay, there are departments in the county that are responsible for maintenance of buildings. This building was built a long time ago, but it's functional. What we need to do is remember that we have to say, no more animals, and we have to make citizens responsible. If you've got two animals, you need to be responsible for those two animals, not the county. If we want to spend all this money, you need to start thinking Baker Act building, okay? You need to start thinking about people, getting our citizens taken care of properly. And yes, I know you're going to hear complaints from every employee, that no matter what kind of a job they have, they don't like this, they don't like that, they like certain things about the job, but, you know, if they're really that upset, then you would have a hard time filling positions. And I don't think there are a hard time filling positions out there, you know? You get an opening, it gets filled. Volunteers, come and go, they're volunteers, they can do what they want. Okay, I'm a volunteer for a lot of things. And if I don't like what's going on, I just say, hey, today's my last day, and I walk away. You've got to remember, you are the stewards of our money, our taxes. We have other things that are necessary. The building, it may need some fixing, it may need some sprucing up. Maybe put some new lights somewhere where somebody says there's no lighting. But they need to say, only so many animals. And when it gets to that point, they did it the other year. They weren't accepting animals because it was full. And yes, you're going to get animals that bite, you're going to get animals that scratch. That's probably why people get rid of them, because the dog was getting aggressive, or the cat was tearing up their furniture. We also have horses, and cows, and pigs, and chickens that get, you know, taken care of by the county. And the thing is, you can only do so much. But to be spending money this way, and I know people are going to hate me for what I'm saying. And they really are. But it's my opinion, and that's where I'm allowed to give my opinion at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Have the next speaker, please.
Sabrina Watson, La Canto, Florida. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the animal shelter. All public health and humane services are important. Our people are important, but so are our pets, so are our veterans, so there's a lot of things that are important. It's my understanding from watching all this for the last year, that this design, while it may not initially be larger, it is better designed, the space is better designed, and I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that there are opportunities for build-outs on it. So if somebody wants to donate a cat wing, or somebody comes along and they want to donate their funds after they've died to the new surgery center, this building allows for those build-outs that could be done by citizens and citizen money or donations, and not necessarily county funds. So I just want to say that, I want to point that out to everybody. And the fact of the matter is, is that it is a thriving, growing, compassionate community. It is essential that we're compassionate in all areas. I don't think Tampa put their animal shelter on Skid Row. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Yes. No ma'am, glad you're here.
So I just wanted to finish up what Bernie had to say. He had some very good numbers here. We're talking, I had talked about the noise level earlier. And so if we have ambient sound in there, that's the sound of a vacuum cleaner. If we have an average full population, that's the sound of a subway platform. And when we are full, which is most of the time, doubling up on animals, that's the sound of a jackhammer. I've seen dogs kill each other because of overcrowding. I've been bit three times, I've spent three days at Shands, because the areas are so narrow, trying to get the dogs in and out without them attacking each other through the kennels. And I know we've had some very other serious injuries to the staff as well. So, you know, how many times do you have to have that before something really awful happens? We, as we said, we're growing. It's only going to get busier in there. It's only going to get busier in there. And our director has instituted so many programs to help keep our numbers down as it is. I don't know how much further down you can get. I mean, we do everything we can to try and keep those dogs in their homes, try and get them adopted, farmed out to other facilities, other rescues. We do everything we possibly can. So please, don't keep kicking this can down the road. It's going to be a problem, it already is a problem. And yes, we're always going to have something else, always, we always have something else. But I defy you to tell me, last time you built a new building, did you worry about the veterans? Did you worry about the kids? Did you worry about whatever? You don't, because you needed them. We need this. It's not a question of sending the money somewhere else, we need this, this is important. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else wish to speak on this motion? Okay, we'll close public comment, board, further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Schleball had her hand up.
I just want to let all of you out there know that so far, we have raised in donations, without a fundraiser, $2,182,390. Randy, you told me this money that for the engineering will be coming out of the donations, correct?
Correct.
So this is not taxpayer dollars. This isn't wasteful spending, Janet. These are donations that the public has sent to, that is in a designated fund. And, you know, it's, I don't, I don't think that there's something that has to be given up to do what is right and proper by building a new, safe, state-of-the-art shelter. It will do more for our community than people realize. Having it in La Canto, we can feed off of universities, we can do so much. There is an opportunity, plus it's the right thing to do. And so, thank you very much, but I support this, you know that I've supported this, and I've listened to the community, and they have been paying, they have been donating money. Tomorrow, I pick up $200,000. A person's already donated an additional $200,000 for the new shelter. So thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, just wanted to get back to that page. It is, to Mr. McDermott's point, wherever you went, it is absolutely, thank you for saying that, it is an integral part of health and safety for the community. Ms. Watson, it is compassion, and it does allow for expansion, so you're absolutely right about that. On that note, I actually thought that the donations were supposed to go to the add-ons, not to the overall shelter design, but maybe somebody else can address that. And to everybody's point, I did do my homework. I, and I think that at least a couple of us up here have, in terms of what are the best practices for a new shelter, and certainly our shelter staff has done so. I personally toured three different shelters, our own, plus two others in other counties, that were almost brand-new, to look at best practices in person. I did that in the fall of 2020, before I started the job as commissioner, but after the election. And they had a small cruelty case when I was in there, and it was abominable situation. I can only imagine, I think last week we took in another 120 cats, or something ridiculous like that. So when we get these huge cruelty cases, or multiple stacked up at once, what the volunteers are telling you is absolutely true. And Janet, I think you left the room, they told me you left the room when I threw some love your way on my last set of comments, but I'm going to respectfully disagree with you. I don't hate you, but you have not done, I actually have quite a lot of affection for you, actually. We do not, you have not done your homework. I would challenge you to go talk to one of the volunteers that's here in the room and go get a tour. Because you do carry a big megaphone in your community, and I think you should go take a look at what the current situation is at the shelter before you make up your mind that we can fix it. Because in my estimation, that ship sailed a long time ago. So, that's all I got.
Hey, Commissioner Carnahan?
I'll wrap it up. Randy, again, the money, first and foremost, I think a million dollars for a design, architecture and design is crazy, but...
It includes A and E services.
Okay, exactly.
That's the...
That's what my question was going to be, is this money coming out of donated money? Because if it's coming out of general fund, I'm going to know if it's coming from donation. I can vote for it, because the people give their money. So if it's donation money, and I also agree with Commissioner Davis, that money was supposed to be for extra add-ons to the shelter, is what I thought. But again, if it's donated money from the public, I'll vote yes. If it's from a general fund, absolutely will not spend a million dollars. I think we can do it cheaper than that.
Well, Mr. Oliver's looking for that, that was my understanding, too. My understanding was that any raised money was going for add-ons to it. Maybe that's changed. And the other thing is, if you spend a million dollars of donated money and you don't end up building the shelter, then you then spend that people's money in bad faith, because they were given that money for the shelter, and if it just goes to a design, then you didn't do what they wanted done. Whereas if you turned around and took that money and fixed the shelter, and did what they wanted, you know, then you would have that. So I'm not going to beat this up, I'm just going to tell you, this is the same thing that happened in Meadowcrest. This is why we ended up with Meadowcrest. Because some commissioners wanted to buy Meadowcrest, and others said, let's look at what we need to do to find a different place, and it was railroaded down that, no, no, that's the only way to do it, that's the only way to do it, all these promises were made, and it never happened. And the final thing, I've heard three times now, the same number of animals. So it doesn't matter how the space is used, it's for the same number of animals. So if the staff has given up their lunchroom because we have too many animals, what I'm hearing, they're going to be giving it up in the new building, because it's designed for the same number of animals. So, and again, I want to go back, just so this is clear. I was never against a new shelter. I was just against the concept of voting to do something without knowing what it's going to cost, where the funds are going to come from. We still haven't talked about the future cost of operation, and we keep getting told, oh, it'll be there, it'll be there. So, yeah, we've committed money that as we sell property, we're going to put it towards capital, it'll go towards the purchase of this or that, but it still does not address the issue of operation. So if you're going to air condition that shelter, it's going to be much more expensive. And I was told, believe it or not, seven and a half years ago when I was elected, this was a very hot topic. The animal shelter was like a big topic. So I went, and I toured it seven and a half years ago, I've toured it several times since then. And seven and a half years ago, we were told, just give us a couple hundred thousand, we'll fix it. You know, just give us this, we'll fix it. So we did, and that was that, until a new group of commissioners come in, and then there's new ears to hear these things, and it goes down the same old road. But I'll tell you this, everybody has their constituency. I'm not saying people are right or wrong, I'm just telling you, the people that talk to me absolutely are against spending this kind of money. They're not against an animal shelter, they're against spending this kind of money. And again, I wouldn't have a problem if a fund was set up, and if it costs $20 million or whatever to build this, because as I pointed out the last time, when you borrow money, which you don't know how much you're going to, it didn't include interest. So who knows what the interest rate's going to be when it's borrowed to build this? If all that money was sitting in an escrow account somewhere, well, of course, I wouldn't have a problem with it. It's just now, it's based on promises, and, oh, we need a nicer place. So all these arguments are good, and again, I won't debate it, because I know I'm on the losing side, but I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, I want, that's a very good point, thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner Davis, because Randy, you actually told me during the briefing that that was, the money was going to be from the donations. I forgot about the add-ons and things like that, because I know there's possible money coming from Bets Farm, and, you know, how are we going to handle this? So where is this money going to be coming from?
As is proposed on the agenda item, it's coming from donations. If you want to take it from another source, you have an agenda item later that you've got $2 million in, a little over $2 million in excess revenues over expenses for last year, you could take it from that, too. for last year, you could take it from that, too. It's board's decision.
Okay.
Money's fungible.
Then you would have to backtrack on your issue, but it wouldn't be county tax dollars.
No, that's what I just, I said that, actually, in the beginning, that I might have misspoke.
Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlebaugh, I do think it goes to, and I know you would be on board with this, I'm not casting aspersions, it goes to our citizen trust in us, and if they donated money for add-ons, it needs to be for add-ons.
Yeah. I, you know, I've only had, really, one person, that's the check tomorrow, that said, I want this to go to the Catio, the $400,000. That was, that's the only person of every check I've picked up that has said that that's what they want it to go to. I still, you know, let's see here in the agenda, it says, I think that this needs to be taken from the general fund, and then we will either reimburse the general fund when we get other additional monies. I don't know, how do you, how do you, what do you suggest, Randy?
If you don't take it from donations, the only place it can come is going to be from general fund contingency or the trip, or not contingency, it would have to come from general fund reserves, because we don't have that kind of money in contingency.
Okay, so it's going to have to come from the donations, which people have donated towards a new shelter, and this is the first step of the new shelter.
Well, if I may, if I may make a comment on that, that's not what you told them. We said in here publicly, over and over, at least three times, it was stated, this is how much money's planned to be borrowed, and any donation money goes to additions and add-ons. That's what we said publicly. So, now, somebody unilaterally has changed that public board policy that said that, okay? Then, we also have in front of us again, another million-dollar expenditure that we're going, well, we don't know where the money's going to come from now. You know, to come in here and present something like this and say, well, we'll find it somewhere, because at first, it's going to be donations, now it's not. Oh, now, it might be general fund, or maybe it won't, and if it does, now we are, somebody also said, we're not giving up anything, it comes from general fund, for Andy just told you, if you take a million out of the $2 million, then you're cutting a million from something else. So, we just got to get our story straight here as we move forward with this, is where it's coming from, what it's for, and what you told people, because you can't go out and tell people, your, yours, your thing is going to this, and, and it doesn't mean that, I don't think we ever allowed people to say, I'll give you money, but this has to go to this item. We've said it can go to building a new shelter or operating a shelter, but, so again, it comes back to sticking by what you said. We're already hearing how people don't trust government, and I've heard three different policy shifts since we started this discussion, so...
Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Just a second. Well, I know, but I'm running the meeting, so let me hear from Commissioner Davis, then we'll hear from the attorney.
Well, the, the Bets Farm sale is theoretically imminent, because we have a lot of interest in it, and one contract already on the table. What is the timing for payment to the firm versus the income from Bets?
Well, I never, I never count money on a real estate deal until the money's in the bank.
I understand that, I understand that.
Okay, even though I think this is a, a very viable offer, but things happen sometimes. But we put it on the next agenda, what's indicated is it would be 45 days from the date that the board approves the contract.
Okay, did that answer your question?
Yes, so...
Partially.
Okay.
Well, just a second, I want to hear what you have to say, soon as...
Well, I, the only thing I can think of is that the donations, quote-unquote, we borrow from that until Bets clears, because it will be sold, we know that. It may be a year from now, but it'll sell. So, that's just one possible thought, but...
Okay. Ma'am Attorney, what have you got?
Yes, I actually have two things. Randy partially answered the Commissioner's question, because the second part of her question was, when does the firm have to be paid, which is the consultant? And I believe that there are deliverables in the contract that structure when the consultant would be paid. It's not like a lump sum that would be paid upfront, so I, I'm not exactly sure what the deliverables are, but there's usually a percentage that they get paid after they've produced a certain percentage, so it wouldn't be that the lump sum would be all due immediately upon signing the contract. And the second thing, it might be helpful in your deliberations to understand which donations we're talking about, because many donations to the new shelter were given before y'all decided this round of, of the contract. I know that there were estates, we had estates before y'all, the two newest commissioners were on the board, so it might be helpful to know which donations we're talking about, because some of those donations might have been given before you all ever asserted that you would use the donations for the new extras. So, and I'm sure that O and B has a breakdown of the donations, when we received them, where we received them from. I think we even had a court case from an estate that was, I believe, before the two newest commissioners were on there. So, it might be helpful for y'all in your deliberations to know which donations Randy's referring to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I absolutely want to be on the same page, and again, I'm sorry if I misspoke about using the donation money towards that, so let's just figure out how to pay for this and move forward. We did also vote that we would get a loan of, what, 7.5 million towards the animal shelter? That was, that was something that was voted on.
That number was reduced from that, but my recommendation is not to do the borrowing until you know what the final cost is going to be, because as I say, costs right now are very unpredictable for construction.
Well, I, I know, but I'm just saying that I want to be on the same page of how we move forward. So, Randy, how do you want to, how do you want to pay for this?
Randy, I must have to say, wait a minute, that's your job, okay? Randy comes forward and says, you asked me to do this, here it is.
Randy, how do you suggest we pay for this?
Randy, you should run to be a county commissioner, since...
I don't want to be a county commissioner.
Exactly. I mean, we're the ones that are supposed to say, take it from this and use it for that, not say, Randy, you know, so anyway.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I? I would suggest that we table this. Until we can get a, a printout of donations that were committed prior to the comment of, or the direction that future donations would go towards expansion or these, these add-ons, because I, I think that what we will find is that there were more than sufficient donations that did not come with those strings attached, people that just wanted to see the new shelter built. There will be more than sufficient amount of money there to, to pay this bill, and then word can be kept to the people who donated in anticipation that their, or expectation that their donations were going to go to the add-ons. I am going to support it, but I, I think that, that, that helps to keep this as clean as possible. That would be my suggestion.
I could support that.
We can get that information together, and should be able to reprogram this for the next board agenda.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so I believe, even though it's not usually operated this way, you'll need to rescind that motion or withdraw it and the second, so...
Withdraw my motion.
Motion drawn?
Reluctantly, yes. I just don't want to kick it down another two weeks.
So, now, what you're hearing, Mr. Oliver, is that we're going to get a further breakdown per what Commissioner Kennard outlined, and it'll come back on the next agenda.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, is everybody clear with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any objection to that?
Okay. Let's move forward. Let's go on to item E2.
E2, approve budget transfers from the state attorney, solid waste, utilities, CARES Act, housing, transit, gas tax, emergency medical services, aviation, and visitor convention bureau for fiscal year 21-22.
Move approval of E2?
Second. Okay, Commissioner Davis makes the motion, second by Commissioner Carnahan. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Item E3, please.
Adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution amending adopting the old homicidal septic sewer, small county outreach program for Forest Ridge resurfacing project, library services, technology act, mobile maker space project grant budget in Monizuma Waters, special assessment budget for fiscal years 21-22.
Move approval of E3?
Second. So, a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Say.
E4.
I don't know, we have public comment, Randy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Janet Barrick. Okay, I was a little confused, which is, you know, sometimes happens. Okay, small county outreach program, that's our SCOP money, was for Forest Ridge resurfacing. Are they going to go back and fix the road that has deteriorated since they resurfaced it at the corner of Forest Ridge Boulevard and Lake Beverly? Because if that was in the SCOP money, it needs to be a road that's going to last more than, less than a year. And it has been pothole and pothole and pothole, and it's on the west side of the street, and it's on the north side going, going, and if you come down the hill and you come to Lake Beverly, you can't miss the potholes that have been redone and redone. And that was resurfaced, that whole thing, that's why, you know, that's why I wanted to say something, because if we're getting SCOP money, either the state's getting cheated or we're getting cheated. And I know, I love SCOP money. I love the fact that we do get SCOP money, and we are able to get the commu, the roads that need to be paved, paved, okay? So, I, I wanted to have that one straightened out before we go any further, because it was confusing to me.
Thank you. So, anybody else wishes to speak on this motion? Okay, Mr. Oliver, you want to come?
Yeah, I can answer that. The subsol conditions there were very marshy. That has been looked at, it's been reworked, it will be reworked, but it's going to be outside of this contract. It has not through this contract.
Okay. So, Commissioners, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that's 5-0. Okay, E4, please.
Yes, approve and adopt administrative regulation 11.19.
No, 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 we're on release. No, this is release of lien, E4.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approve and author, a, approve and authorize the chairman to execute releases of lien for property abatement assessment by and between Citrus County, Florida, and certain property owners. B, authorize a clerk to report the releases of lien in the public records of Citrus County.
Move approval of E4?
A and B.
E, A and B, sorry.
Okay, so Commissioner Davis makes that, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that passes 4-0 so far. We'll check. Okay, item E5, please.
E5, approve and adopt administrative regulation number 11 dot 19, policy and procedures for installation of private traffic control devices for accredited private schools.
Motion approved, item E5.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Kennard makes the motion, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, that passes 4-0 so far. Okay, E6, please.
E6 is to accept the conveyance of a 35-by-54-foot metal hanger from Dan G. Montgomery at the Inverness Airport. We would ask for approval of item A and B.
Move approval of E6, A and B?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Davis makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Any, but yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, we also need to add to that motion, authorize the chairman to sign, that was something that was missed on the agenda memo.
Okay, so that's A, B, and C. C would be authorize the chairman to sign. Commissioner Davis and Kennard, are you good with that motion?
Yes.
E6, A, B, and C, yes.
Okay. All right, so, Commissioners, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, that's 4-0 again so far. E7, please.
Yes, this is a, a situation where there's a maintenance agreement between Brentwood Farms and a new section that's being opened, and they're going to capitalize on the palm that's out there. We have worked out an arrangement to make this, to facilitate this, and Swift Mud is in agreement, and we've gotten all the necessary approvals, this will permit them to move forward the project next door, and we would ask for approval of A and B.
Move approval of E7, A and B?
Second.
Commissioner Davis makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, again, 4-0. Let's see, E8, please.
Yes, E8, the board asks us to go and get appraisals done of these various fire stations that were deemed excess. We've gotten those appraisals. We're asking that all of them be declared excess, excluding the Floral City Station, which Animal Services wants to use in the interim for storage and whatever they need it for, because of the space limitations that they have. What we will do with this, then, is after you declare them surplus, we will list them with a real estate broker, unless there's an apparent buyer that comes forward fairly quickly, and sell these properties. One of them, I know at least one of them's under a dollar a year lease, but if we get an offer on it, as Commissioner Davis said, it will be sold.
Okay, so what is your pleasure with E8?
Do I understand that the motion needs to, say, pull Floral City, or no?
Yes, we need to, yes, we need to pull the Floral City Station off.
So, motion to approve E8, A and B, with a deletion of 7705 South Florida Avenue Floral City.
Okay.
Second.
All right, just so we're clear, though, it's on my agenda sheet, it says they're recommending that the fire station in Floral City be kept, so...
But it's listed in a...
It's all in there, okay, all right. So, so we have a motion for that by Commissioner Davis, and second by Commissioner Kennard of A and B. And any public comment on item E8? Commissioners, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, that passes unanimously. And Commissioner Davis, how do you vote on item E4?
You mean Schlebaugh?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Schlebaugh, how do you vote on item E4?
Aye.
And on item E5?
Aye.
And on item E6?
A and B, aye.
And on item E7?
A and B, aye, yes.
Okay, get that...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I think on item 6 was the one we added C.
A, B, and C, aye.
Okay, I said item E6, all-inclusive, when I'm just going out through it, so, anyway, as long as everybody knows what we got here, so, okay. All right, E9, please.
Yes, E9, approve and authorize the chairman to execute HUD Form 571, certification of payments to influence federal transactions as required by HUD.
Motion to approve E9?
Second.
So, motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Is there any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, E10, please.
Yes, E10, approve and authorize chairman to sign the contract between the, the government of the Virgin Islands, Core Civic and Citrus County. Please note, this is a consent to house these particular inmates. The county's not involved in the financial part of this transaction, except to the extent we get a per diem for each, each inmate.
Motion approved, item E10.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Kennard makes the motion, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment?
I know there was some questions about Core Civic, and they're running the jails, you know, the detention facility. What if Core Civic no longer runs it? Will this contract carry over to the new person, new corporation that is going to possibly Will this contract carry over to the new pers- new corporation that is going to possibly be running the jail? Or will you have to go down this rabbit hole again and the contract would be null and void with the Virgin Islands?
Okay, so any other public comment? Okay, Mr. Oliver, you want to answer that?
Yes, uh, the contract, uh, Core Civic's an integral part of this contract, and if Core Civic doesn't run it, it would not be a, a contract, uh, unless the Virgin Islands decided to renegotiate that, which I think is highly unlikely.
Okay, so board, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Item E eleven, please.
Approve and authorize the chairman to execute the, uh, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission Contract, W, uh, FWC twenty-one one forty-five for the purpose of aqua- of aquatic plant control between Citrus County, Florida, and the Florida Fish and Wildlife, uh, Conservation Commission to conduct work on eligible water bodies, uh, within Citrus County. This is, uh, an annual contract.
Motion approved, item E eleven.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that's unanimous. E twelve, please.
Yes, hopefully we're pulling to the finish line on this project going up to E nineteen. Uh, approve and authorize the chairman to execute golf consortium sub recipient agreement, twenty-two oh three four one three one point oh one pursuant to the Restore Act spill impact component and the State of Florida State Expenditure Plan in the amount of five million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Motion approved, item E twelve.
Second. Okay, although I did hear Commissioner Carahan jump out there first.
He's the one that's been fighting in the trenches for this.
I gotta say, motion made by Commissioner Carahan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Okay, so we got Carahan making a motion, Kennard seconding it. Is there any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And we'll get Commissioner Davis when she comes back. Item E three, or excuse me, E thirteen.
Yes, authorize chairman to execute the countywide stormwater utility operations and management assessments proposal letter from neighbors Givlin for twenty-two twenty-three. Authorize chairman to execute the countywide stormwater utility management assessment proposal level, letter from Government Services Group for fiscal year, uh, twenty-two twenty-three. This is, uh, with MSBUs, this is required, uh, typically of, to keep them updated for properties that come onto the tax roll and some properties that leave the tax rolls.
Motion approved, item E thirteen, A and B.
Second. Okay, so Commissioner Kennard makes the motion, second by Commissioner Carahan. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Commissioner Davis, how do you vote on E twelve?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that makes it five zero. Go on to E fourteen, has been pulled. Do you wanna just say?
Yeah, let me just do a, a brief update for the public on this one. Uh, last night we got a call from a very, uh, credible buyer. They've indicated that they are interested in this particular property, uh, and they have put a deposit on it. We've not worked out the details, but what they represented to me was that, uh, they were, they were gonna pay the offer price, but more importantly, uh, they were going to have a contract with only the contingency that the DRI is still in place, which means it's basically taking the property as is. Okay, and it's kind of akin to having somebody buying your house. One person wants a home inspection and the other one doesn't want a home inspection. Well, you wanna take the one with no contingencies if you can. I'm also very confident that, uh, the finance, you know, whether this person has the funds to consummate this transaction is very much not an issue.
Okay, very good, so that'll come back in the future then.
Next meeting.
One question, um, so do we know what the type of development it would end up being with the two individuals? Because I know on the former and I think I know on the second.
Uh, no, we, we have certain things in there, but I will say the quality that the person that made the proposal on has historically been very good.
Okay, yeah, that's, that was what I wanted to ascertain.
Okay, item E fifteen, please, which is the add-on about retainage release?
Yes, uh, this is, uh, we, we needed to do this for Ranger Construction to release the retainage because of the State's Prompt Payment Act, which is twenty-five days, and because of the timing with agendas, that makes it, uh, challenging sometimes for us, so we would ask for approval of that.
Approval of E fifteen.
A and B, I see on the agenda, okay, so it's an A and B, and so we had approval from Commissioner Carahan and second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes four oh. Now we're gonna move into, uh, item F.
Chair.
I'm sorry.
Was that five oh?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, five oh.
Okay.
Okay, uh, item number eight has been complete. I need to get a schedule to you all of when those responses are due back. That should be fairly quickly, and, uh, how this schedule's gonna mesh, so. But we would ask for removal of item number eight.
Mr. Chair, motion approved, item F with the deletion of number eight.
Okay.
Second.
So, motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on this? Any further board discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. That way I don't have to say numbers. Okay, uh, let's see, Mr. Oliver, item G one.
Yes, we have Campbell McLean, who's the attorney that's representing the county in this particular transaction, uh, because it involves a, a commissioner as well as the engineer here. Uh, Mr. McLean will explain, uh, you know, uh, the transaction, answer any questions that may come up, and, uh, then make a recommendation to you all.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, my name's Campbell McLean. I'm with the law firm of Gray Robinson, and I am your attorney. I have been working for the county for, since two thousand and five, and it's a pleasure to be back in front of you today. I know the topic today is somewhat eyebrow-raising, but as, uh, one of your prior presenters today mentioned, uh, the, the item here today is something to do in, as a matter of transparency. So, we want to come before you. Uh, this is a decision for the collective board to make because it involves one of your own. So, my purpose here today is to explain what we are doing, how we got here, uh, the, uh, then, uh, discussion to date and to be available for questions. Uh, I, along with the county's, uh, project engineer, are here to answer your questions today. So, with that, I'd like to try to get into this presentation. You can go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. Trying to play along at home here as we do this. Yeah, and, yeah, no, it's all right. I think I might work, do better without the glasses. All right. Um, first of all, let's talk a bit of history about the four ninety-one road project. As you, as the board is probably well aware, this was a, a longer project that went from south of forty-four up to County Road forty-six. The board broke it in half a number of years ago. Uh, we've taken care of the southern half, which I'm sure you're all aware of, and this is that last bit of two-lane highway between essentially Horace Allen on the north and, uh, what we call the Leanne Extension to the south. Uh, we want to get those to four-lane, and then this project will be complete. Uh, this board made a decision on the alignment for this northern portion back in two thousand and eighteen. I was part of the, the group that put that together as well. Uh, at that time, uh, we considered a number of alignments, and, uh, I wanted to point out that no acquisition was required from the Schlebach property in any one of those alignments at that time. This is because all of the alignments needed to shift from the east side to the west side in this location. Go to the next slide. Uh, it's probably too difficult to see here on this screen, but what this is, this is just the property appraisal map. And what I'm trying to illustrate here is that as you go north from Horace Allen, uh, we have already acquired the needed right-of-way to build this project on the west side of the road. That was done as part of the four eighty-six project when we did the intersection with four ninety-one and forty-six. We came down and acquired that property from, um, uh, Mr. Capicelli and one of his companies. So, uh, no matter what alignment was selected by the board in two thousand and eighteen, it needed to move back, shift back to the western side, uh, in order to meet up with the property that we already own. Again, it's the best use of the county's funds using the land that we already hold. Uh, next slide, please. The one thing that is important to point out, and I had to go back and look at these presentations myself, in each one of the alignments that came before this board in two thousand and eighteen, we, we showed a change to the alignment of the Horace Allen intersection. Uh, as you can tell from the last map, and if you know from driving the area, Horace Allen intersects with County Road forty-one, four ninety-one at an angle. Therefore, it's not as safe a condition. You want to have perpendicular connections, if you can, with, uh, with an intersection like this. Now, County Road forty-one is designated as a minor arterial, uh, so it's, even though it says minor in the word, it's really a major road for, uh, Citrus County. County Road forty-six, also a minor arterial, so it's the same caliber, and we're trying to make sure that these intersections are as safe as they can be, so that the time when you finally put this new road into service, it is safe and as functional as we could possibly do at the time. So, the board made the selection in two thousand and eighteen to go with the eastern alignment. Again, as I mentioned, it shifted to the left, so you can go ahead and the next one. This is what the image is for the eastern, uh, alignment selection from two thousand and eighteen. Again, it shows that, the, uh, it's oriented, so west is to the, is to the top of the page, but it shows this realigned Horace Allen intersection, all right? Uh, and so this is the, the, basically the, the framework that staff was directed to go and, uh, design this road, uh, when design sort of came into, came into play. Now, uh, a few years later, we finally had funding for the design. Uh, CHW Professional Consultants was the firm tasked with designing this next phase of four ninety-one. Robert Walpole, who is behind me here, is the P E, uh, and he is the person that will be signing and sealing the plans, uh, and his goal is to design the safest, uh, best road he can for Citrus County. Um, the intersection goals for four, for Horace Allen were to, of course, make it perpendicular to the best we could to create a safe and functional intersection and to minimize the impacts to surrounding property owners. Next slide. Uh, now, there's problems with the current location. I think this is the best starting point, is to discuss why this is a problem. We already talked about the angle. So, the, uh, the view from a driver trying to be at that intersection, looking back over their shoulder, uh, the way that they come into the intersection, all of that is what makes it less safe. So, um, that's the first item. Second issue is that the where this, that intersection is currently located presents a problem for what we call directional access to the north. So, I've got a slide that will show that. Um, and then the third problem is that where it's currently located, if you go straight across to the east, which the design, the idea would be that this road would be improved and extended at some point in the future when the need is there, you want it to go into something that is, uh, buildable. Uh, we have a problem with a FEMA flood plane over there. Next slide. Next slide, it looks like, it looks like I'm probably going faster than you are. Um, there we go. So, just north of the intersection is an existing, uh, truck turnaround area that was constructed as part of the forty-six project. Uh, that is this sort of bulb that you see where the X is. Um, and also behind that is a county wastewater station. And so, those are, it's a, you know, water pump, sorry, yeah, wastewater pump station. So, those are existing facilities that serve and make the four ninety-one, four eighty-six intersection safer because trucks need to be able to turn around, make that maneuver, and come back to the businesses that are up towards the intersection. So, that was a safety feature built in there. With a minor arterial road and based on the land development code's, uh, access management standards, we have to put a distance of six hundred and sixty feet between an intersection, a full intersection, and a directional intersection. If you leave the intersection where it is, that six hundred and sixty feet is now north of this existing truck turnaround that we already have. The other item is that frankly, you've got commercial property on the other side of the road, and you can do offsetting directional, uh, access points. So, it makes better sense to, first of all, protect the existing improvement that we have with the directional turnaround and to provide, um, access into the La Canta Venture property to the west for their future development in businesses. That's where the Culvers is going now, and that property is starting to be developed, and I think we'll be, the development will continue to the south into this zone. So, uh, directional access was the first issue. Uh, then, uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the other issue with the FEMA flood zone that is directly across from the intersection, so it makes it more difficult to build this road heading east, uh, in the future, uh, because it's the low spot, so we'll have flooding problems there. So, it was, it was our goal to try to avoid that as well. Go to the next slide, please. So, uh, CHW identified issues with pushing the intersection too far south as well. And this had to do with the existing business that is, uh, just, just south of where that proposed intersection is supposed to be, along with some operational issues that I'll explain briefly. So, here again is that image, uh, if you'll go to the next slide, from the two thousand and eighteen route study. This is the proposed conceptual alignment for Horace Allen at this point. As you notice, there, there's the white building there on the west, east side of the road. That is a company called Baker Distributing, um, and so we met with the owner of that, uh, that property out in the field. Um, but, uh, as you'll note, if you go further south, you're gonna hit right into that business. The road is gonna go through that business, and we don't want that. We don't want to put anyone out of business as part of this project. Um, I already explained why too far north is a problem. Uh, the other issue is that there's a turn lane problem. So, if you are traveling north on County Road four ninety-one and you want to take a right at this future intersection, a right-hand turn lane would be needed. If we were to put a right turn lane in, in that configuration, we would be wiping out most of the front parking for that business, uh, and we'd also be impacting their driveway access, where their driveway could conceivably be in the turn lane itself, which is, again, another safety problem for our designer. So, um, if you'll go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is the design that we essentially came up with. We pushed that intersection a bit further to the north. Now, we're impacting another property to the north, but this is where that, the, the east side of the intersection would intersect. Uh, what that does, you can see there's a right-hand turn lane that is designed there that is, uh, on the northbound for, um, the four ninety-one, uh, lane. And so, we were able to get a sufficient length of a right-hand turn lane. We are missing, uh, Baker Distributing and all of their parking, uh, and, um, this is the best place for it. It keeps that, that turnaround up there, that truck turnaround I mentioned. It keeps that in play, so we have directional access up there as well. The problem that we had was when we started looking at how this affects Baker Distributing. Uh, and so, this is what a car would do. This is a vehi- a regular passenger car coming out of Baker in the aftercondition. Part of this road project put, includes putting a median into property that the county already owns. That median is going to change access flow into and out of this Baker Distributing site. Now, that's pretty normal. That's part of any road project. But, uh, what we noticed was that this particular business could be creating some issues, not willingly, but it could create issues and safety problems. Now, what this is showing right here is a passenger vehicle coming out of the business, crossing two lanes of traffic, traffic that is, is for a road that has design speed of forty-five miles an hour, trying to get into a turn lane and then making a U-turn at the intersection. Now, it shows that it's possible. It's not something we want to encourage, but that's what happens on roads. Uh, the problem is with the next slide. This is what a truck maneuver would look like coming out of Baker Distributing in the after. Truck drivers are pretty amazing folks. They can get their trucks in and out of, uh, pretty tight spaces. But, that's a, that's just a W, what we call a WB fifty. Um, that's not even the largest type of truck that we believe sometimes can, comes into this site, but it's a standard truck that they have. And what we don't want are these large trucks coming out of that site, trying to get in, you cross the two lanes of traffic, get into the turn lane, and then block the intersection trying to make a crazy U-turn. That's the danger problem. That's the safety issue that we identified and that we thought, well, gosh, is there some way that we can fix this? Uh, so, uh, we did, and we had a group of consultants that were all sitting down trying to look at how to.
Sir.
Yes.
Do we know how those trucks are leaving Baker Distributing now?
Yes, right now, they, it's a two-lane road with no divided highway. So, they have complete ingress egress directly out of that driveway.
So, they just pull out, turn left or right, doesn't matter?
Right. They have unrestricted southbound and northbound access.
So, is the, the median that's creating the issue here?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And, you know, if they don't do it at this, this intersection, their next opportunity is up at maybe four ninety-one. And we have the same problem with traffic coming south. So, coming south, the next intersection, I believe, is gonna be Finacy, will be the full median opening at this, for this phase of the project. And, um, you know, it's just not preferable to have these large trucks making those maneuvers, blocking up traffic, if it's something that we can reasonably avoid. So, we looked into doing that. Um, I believe that's all the points I wanted to make. So, uh, if you'll go to the next slide, please. So, what we came up with was extending the leg from the intersection east. And what that allows us to do is to provide cross-access to the rear of the Baker Distributing site. And this will allow trucks to circulate into and out of that property without a problem. Um, and it, it makes the intersection safer, it makes it function better, and it provides, uh, it eliminates potential claims for damages that we might receive in the eminent domain process from. potential claims for damages that we might receive in the eminent domain process from Baker Distributing. I'm not going to say to you that it's, that there will not be a claim. I know they're, they are represented, even though we met with the owner, and the owner told us he thought that was fantastic, that this plan that we did will make it better for him and safer for their business and their trucks. Notwithstanding, he's hired an attorney, so that is what it is.
And it is Attorney Appreciation Day.
It is. Thank you for pointing that out.
I'm just not hap, I'm just happy I'm not here to talk about the library.
Thanks, Campbell. Thank you.
Anyway, so next slide, please. I'm going to show the outbound maneuver. Again, this is, and this is a large truck. This is WB-62. So this is about as large as we'll ever be into or out of the site, but it works. So the only thing that we had to do is we had to acquire more right-of-way, extend that intersection downaways, and then connect it to the back site of Baker. Now, we've done this elsewhere on the project. There's the Florida Cancer Specialist that is on the southern end. We have, because where the hospital intersection's going to be, they had the same problem. We were, we were basically having to take their frontage. We didn't, weren't able to get a sufficient length of a turn lane into that property. But we said, listen, if you let us reroute you, we're going to reroute you to the side, we'll build that for you, then you'll have direct access to an intersection. They, again, thought that was wonderful. So we're closing their driveway as part of this process. And by the way, we have that contract. It's now been signed by both the owner and the tenant. So we're very happy to be able to bring that to Randy, and we'll be getting that signed and closed shortly. So it worked down there. It's our proposal up here, and we believe this is the best solution for the engineering issues that are involving this intersection. I think we'll get a better intersection out of it that will function better, and it will, more, most importantly, protect an existing business that's been here for quite some time. And that was our direction as your consultants, to make sure that we don't make things worse. So let's go to the next slide, please. So this is a graphic of what the area is that we need to acquire in order to build this intersection properly. And so you can see there's a lot of red. The red is fee simple land that we need to purchase. There's a good segment on the, on the west side of the road that we need from the old dirt road property group. We're in negotiations with them. The property on the east side to the north is parcel 3012. We've already acquired that property, and we are actually putting a drainage pond on that property. So, and we will be able to bring a surplus area to this board that you can then sell for a commercial value down the road. But we bought that in an arms-linked transaction. It was listed for sale. We grabbed it, and that way we avoided all of the eminent domain problems of them hiring experts, hiring an attorney, figuring out what the impact would be from taking a piece of that property. So we believe that was a very good situation. That still leaves us with Schlebaugh property. And so what you're seeing here is we are bifurcating their land. Before, they have a large 60-acre piece in the back, and then this sort of corridor that goes between 3012 and Baker Distributing. We're creating that sort of peanut shape, which is an isolated remainder, but it's still usable, but it's impacted. It's damaged, according to our consultants. If you'll go to the next slide, please. So about parcel 310, about the Schlebaugh property. It's owned by Commissioner Schlebaugh and her husband. It was purchased in 2002. It is commercially zoned property. It connects to a residential property in the back. Like I said, it's about 60 acres. And they purchased it four years prior to this particular project ever appearing in the CIP. So I think it's important, and I want to say for the record, that the idea that the Schlebaugh speculated on this particular property in anticipation of maybe being impacted by eminent domain or the county's road project is not consistent with the title history. I do not believe that to be the case. Another point that I want to bring up is that also Commissioner Schlebaugh was not on this commission in 2018 when the decision was made for the particular alignment that I discussed earlier. And I also want to add that there was no influence to the design team or the consultants or staff from Commissioner Schlebaugh about this matter whatsoever. This is a matter that came up through the design process. It's in the normal course. And this is something that we identified was an improvement and a betterment for this particular intersection that makes the road safer. There was no influence or consultation. In fact, they didn't know about it until I showed up with a draft appraisal on hand and said, we need to talk about your property. That was the only impact or involvement that was had there. Let's see. Go to the next slide, please. Citrus County hired, well, we have a team of consultants, but what was required for this was a land planner, a site engineer, and an appraiser, an MAI appraiser. They are the same people that are doing all of the properties up and down this route and assessing those and evaluating those, where they reached this value conclusion of $268,700. And what we did is we had to consider how to treat the Schlebaugh's. She has constitutional rights, she and her husband, I should say, they're joint, joint owners. They have constitutional rights under Florida law. And so the question is whether they should be treated differently because of her position on this board. My advice to this council and to the way I approach this and my partner Kent Hip, we advise that they should not, that they should not receive any special treatment because of her position on this, on this committee, commission. They should also not receive any negative treatment because of that position. We're going to try to treat them like we treat everybody else on the project, and then we want to make sure this is all presented in the open in this kind of a forum so that you all understand how we've handled this matter. So that is the 25% additional incentive offer. And we have made that on other properties. In fact, the Cancer Center that I just mentioned, the deal that we just got documented today, was also offered 25% for, in addition to the appraised value for that acquisition. And it got it done. It got it done without them hiring outside appraisers, outside engineers, outside land planners, or an outside legal counsel, all of whom this body would have to pay for as part of the process. So the way, next slide, please. So we presented the appraisal, we presented the incentive offer, we presented the Schlebaugh's with the standard Citrus County contract that we use for all other owners on the project, and they accepted that. They accepted that without requiring us to go spend money, additional public funds, on any of those experts or any of those outside counsel. So for those reasons, we believe that they, we've handled this in the most straightforward way we can. They've executed that agreement, and that's what's here before you today. I realize there's, there may be other questions. And so I'm, I'm here to take your questions, as is Mr. Walpole. And I think that concludes my presentation.
Okay. May I?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was prepared to make the motion.
Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve item G1, A through D.
Second.
Okay. So I heard Commissioner Kennard make the motion, Commissioner Carahan on the second, and that's G1, A, B, C, D. Is that correct? Is that all the alphabets we need on this, Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So A, B, C, and D. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any public comment on the motion? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. But give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Deb Spence, I just have one question. And is there going to be a light control in that intersection? Because it's difficult to cross across Horace Allen right now. And with all the new buildings and companies that are coming in, it's going to be even more difficult to get across that intersection.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Sabrina Watson. I just have a couple of comments. I hung out specifically to hear this. I think it was very well presented, and I really appreciate that. I felt that there was a great deal of transparency there as well. And I do just want to make the statement that just because Commissioner Schlebaugh is commissioner, doesn't make her any less of a citizen. Again, I appreciate the presentation. I would actually like to purchase your crystal ball, you know, the one that you used in 2002. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other comment on this motion?
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs. I sat through a lot of meetings for the 491, and I'm glad that this hopefully is going to be one of the last ones before you start construction. And I think that it's a fair price for a piece of land to do something positive for the citizens of Citrus County.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. No more public comments, Randy, about the signalization?
There will be a signal there.
Okay. So there'll be signalization.
I just have one comment, too.
Yes.
The excellent presentation, Campbell. Thank you, and happy Attorney's Day. I will just say that one other point in terms of, since we brought up citizen trust and government many times today, we actually didn't actually have to have this public meeting because I believe it's, Mr. Oliver already has the authority to sign all of these contracts, but we specifically brought it forward to make sure that the citizens got to hear the entire presentation, so.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Kennard.
I'll just make a quick, quick comment. I was, I was interested in seeing the, the presentation and why the alignment was changed and so forth, which necessitated the purchase of additional property. I had questions. As I asked about the truck's turnaround, was it the median causing the problem, what was happening there? Did a great job presenting, obviously by making the motion, I'm sold on it, so.
Okay. Commissioner Carahan, something, something to say?
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, me, too. I discussed this, somebody brought this up at a meeting I was at yesterday with some citizens groups. And I said, in my opinion, I would, I would rather see the person get the 25% incentive. Nothing against attorneys, but spending, instead of spending it on attorneys and other, you know, litigation, and we still have to pay for that anyway. This way, it's almost like the no contingency sale, you know? We know what's going to happen and go forward. So again, I, I think it's a fair thing to do. And, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just have some housekeeping matters to take care of.
You're going to say for the record, you can't comment and vote or all that?
Actually, first, I was going to ask the record to please reflect that Commissioner Kennard complimented an attorney today.
Can we replay the tape?
I, I think I heard that, and, and I would, I would say that I appreciate that because Campbell and I actually were law school classmates. It was interesting when I came to the county to find that he was representing the county. But aside from all of that, Commissioner Schlebaugh needs to make a pronouncement before the vote, and she needs to state her intentions to complete the proper conflict forms.
Mr. Schlebaugh.
Yes, I recuse myself and will sign the proper forms.
And you're recusing yourself because the vote would in your, to your personal benefit?
Would be a detriment or a benefit.
Perfect.
Okay. Are you happy with all that?
Yes, sir.
So we have everything in the record. We've listened to the public. I have the, it's being, the motion is made by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Carahan. Any further board discussion? Okay, since we went through all this elaborate presentation, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kennard?
Aye.
Commissioner Carahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Chairman Kitchen?
Aye. So it passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thank you. And we could have done that before the library discussion, but we thought you guys would want to hang around for that, so.
Wouldn't their bell have been less if we had done that early?
Okay. Let's see. Item G2, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, item G2, as, as you're aware, we have a, we had excess revenue over expenses. We have to budget every year 5% contingency. So roughly, if everything's perfect, we'll wind up with $4 to $5 million at the end of the year. Well, at the end of the year, we wind up with $3,924,435. We are recommending replacing some significant equipment and replenishing our general fund contingency a little bit for the life stream additional contribution that we were not aware of because of the way the state did this. Bottom line, however, is after doing that, there is about two points, there's $2,769,435 that will go into reserves. We're recommending that you keep that there temporarily until you approve the CIP. And when consulting with the CIP, after you agree with that and get that the way you want it, then those funds can be applied to projects that you think will benefit citizens the most.
So at this point, you're, you're asking for approval of the listed expenditures as well as holding on to the $2,700,000.
That's correct.
So board understands that? If that's the case, we're going to...
Mr. Chair, approval of G2.
Second.
Okay. So Commissioner Carahan makes a motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Any further commissioner discussion? I'm sure you'll remind us, Mr. Oliver, to have that discussion about the 2.7 million, right?
We will.
Okay. Very good. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Let's see, we've taken care of each one. We're down to advisory board announcements.
Announced five vacancies on the Historic Resource Advisory Board. Please note that some of these positions are restricted to certain occupations. One's an architect, one's an archaeologist, one's a historian, and then there are two at-large members. And these terms will expire January 31st of 2024. This has historically been a hard board to get people to, to submit applications and also attend the meetings because they've had trouble with Quan before.
And I also have another question. Did, again, not the muddy of the water, but I thought we had a discussion at one time, Madam Attorney, that said, we have to try to fill per these categories or the closest we can get to it. Or there's a board set, empty if we can't find anybody. Or, in other words, let's say somebody came forward like a Hampton Dunn, you know, could, would he qualify as a historian? You know what I'm saying? Something like that.
I, I think that those terms are loosely applied, but I will say that it depends on the specific enabling document, however the board was created, as to whether or not there's any leeway. So different boards are constituted different ways, so I can't say universally.
Maybe you can have Mr. Sherman, Mr. Oliver, look into that and see if the board's given any leeway, because if, if we can never find an archaeologist that wants to serve on this board, but other people might want to, and if we have some leeway, it might be worth looking into, so.
Well, I mean, with professionals like architects and engineers, that's pretty easy to deem those qualifications. An architect or archaeologist is not quite as well-defined, but I will ask Mr. Sherman to do that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, yes.
I don't know. Engineering shoes are very hard to fill.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay. So let's go on to committee reports. Item J, who wants to start?
I don't have any.
You don't have anything? Commissioner Schlebaugh?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Davis?
I do. Have TDC tomorrow. Shout out to Jody. She passed two on her Instagram, so she has now reached her goal of passing Amelia Island. So she's pretty jazzed about that. The, I also sat in on, this is really cool stuff, sat in on the NACO committee meeting. There was a White House briefing on the Bipartisan Innovation Act, and I found out some fun facts that, let's see. Last year, one-third of our inflation was caused by the chip shortage. We used to be 40% of global production of chips. We are now down to 10%. And so part of this innovation act is looking to expand semiconductor hubs around the country. I'm actually going to get to stuff that gets to Citrus in just a moment. I just want to give you the background. Half of the high-wage jobs in the last 10 years have been created in only 41 counties in the United States, and 90% of the growth is in only five metro areas in the United States. Kind of scary, right? So here's what this Bipartisan Innovation Act wants to do, is basically spread the high-wage growth, innovation, and economic development to less metro areas, such as Citrus County. They've mentioned specifically advanced energy production, like EV batteries or solar, quantum computing, and biotech. But I believe that we could do aquaculture and work with the university, and there seems to be a lot of groundswell of support for that in this county, and I think that would be a really good idea. They're looking that the total funding on this would be in the 40 to 50 billion range. It's to strengthen research and development and grow high-wage jobs, like I said, and not those 40-whatever counties. And that's it on committee reports. I've got something when it comes back to just stuff.
Okay, I, I had an interesting thing. On Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I was in St. Pete, or as Doug and I say, Pinellas Park, right? That's where it was, for the TBRPC Regional Leadership Summit on Resiliency. That's it, thank you, sir. And so first, the exciting news is, is that it was also combined with the 28th Annual Region, Future of the Regions Award, and they give out a whole list of awards to projects that do just that, face the future, and projects the best identified. And I am just, I'm surprised that nobody has heard about this, but I'm just extremely pleased that I was asked to, anybody remember who, now my name just completely left my head, used to be the anchor on Bay News 9 for 10 years, I want to say Veronica, Veronica, remember Veronica? The, yeah, well, she was the emcee for it. And so when it got to the biggest award for the, which is the Macintosh Award, which is the overall award of everything given by the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, they asked me to come up and give the award because it was given to Save Crystal River, which was huge. Because now what that means is, I mean, these projects that win down there, things like MacDill Air Force Base and, you know, Tampa Airport and stuff like that. And so the fact that that program won, A, was a huge thing for Citrus County. Lisa Moore was there to, to accept it, as well as their new administrator. And so I, I think what's going to fascinate about that is that it is such a success story. Now, when they go back to the state for funding in the future, they can show that they're a regionally recognized success story, that, that has, and I'll tell you why I knew I felt good when I got them to, to, to enter, was because when I invited them down a couple of years ago, and I was the chairman, and made that presentation, the board down there was wowed by it, you know? And everybody kept saying, come to my county and tell me, tell us how to do it and how to do it. So I knew if, if we could get them in the nominating process, that they had a very good chance of winning. And I thought they'd win in their category, but the fact that they won the biggie overall was, was really amazing. So congratulations to Save Crystal River that brought regional acclaim to Citrus County and, and what they're doing. Also, it's a fascinating discussions, the whole two days, they had different panels. One that really came up was interesting, was the concept between affordable housing, which I know is real important to some of you guys, and things like transportation. And every time they talked about resiliency and everything else, the key focus was transportation. Because the point was, if you need affordable housing, a lot of times, folks don't have two cars, and some don't have any cars, and if there's no regional transportation network or whatever, then if you have affordable housing built away from the work centers, then that really defeats the purpose. So same thing with food, you know, that you got to pay attention to where people go to get their food. So they had a lot of these concepts where, you know, we have the 50 and over, like apartments and stuff, and it really works well with apartments. But they have a lot of these concepts where they have what they call the market-driven rate mixed in with the affordable housing rates, and they're all in the same building. So you can't look at a, at a building and say, that's affordable housing, or that's market-driven, or whatever. They also talked a great deal about density bonuses and things like that, so some of the things we've already touched on. But a lot of those presentations, I think, are on their website, if you're interested in seeing them. They had really good, the four bigot, the mayors from Tampa, St. Pete, Clearwater, and Largo were there, and which are the four largest cities in the Tampa Bay region. Very good discussion. They asked questions, you hear input from everybody else, but, and again, I was very happy to see our Secretary David Gwynn was there all three days and sat there, and he was signaled out by how, how good he is at listening about transportation issues. So it's an overall event, great success, I think, and congratulations to Save Crystal River. And that's the only committee report I have for right, oh, and I already talked about the canvassing board, so everybody's aware of that. So we're going back to the way we were before. So let's see, so we're up to, let me make sure I'm on the right track here. So we're going to Commissioner Carnahan.
Nothing.
And Commissioner Kennard.
Nothing.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, sir. Very quickly, I just want to talk about, just give the citizens a briefing on how it wrapped up last week with the strategic planning process. So the two consultants that ran it did an outstanding job. Two of my colleagues, they may want to mention what they thought of it as well, I don't know. They were with me last week on Tuesday, and we came up with a vision, mission, and strategic goals. And from here, and one of the best things about it is under strengths, they listed our staff. So, and the staff was lined up, you know, some of the, the more senior staff was lined up along the wall listening, so they got some staff love, which I thought was outstanding. Where we go from here? The consultant will write everything up and put forward his more polished version of what came out of those sessions. We should get that within a couple of weeks. We will make that, we'll make any adjustments that we want. Typically, it's going to be a very light touch, just for wording or things like that, but it'll come through pretty much unscathed from what it, it is currently. We'll make it present, make it into a presentation, and then there's going to be essentially a roadshow workshop with citizens type scenario, which I have volunteered to be involved in around the county. And that'll take basically for the rest of the year, just getting citizen input on where we are. Then we go forward to the board retreat in January. We actually put specific strategic initiatives. For example, we want to take X number of septics offline in the next five years, because this is a five-year plan. And all of those very specific numerical goals that can be judged in terms of whether we were effective at it or not over the five years, those numbers will go to the staff. They'll tell us, hey, we can do that. Hey, you're nuts, we can't do that. Or, hey, it's somewhere in between. So they have to be reasonable goals, achievable goals. So it'll be that interplay in the first couple of months of 20, I can't believe I'm saying this, 2023. And then that will help inform the budget, budgetary process for that following budget cycle. And that's where we are. And would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I was, I was only able to make it there on Tuesday, but I was impressed. I was impressed with the, the cross-section of the community that was there. I was impressed with how involved everybody was. Very, very different groups of people at each table, but when they came up to give their presentations, it was interesting how they all kind of, there were some common themes, there was a common thread through each of the presentations. So I thought it was well-done, and I was, I was truly thankful that, that I was there and that, that you put this together. So thank you. I think it'll result in a good product.
Okay.
Mr. Slaybaugh, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think you covered it, John.
All right. Mr. Slaybaugh? Anything?
No, I'm done.
Okay. I had a couple of things I wanted to mention, just to start thinking about, if, when you look at our upcoming workshops, our next workshop, according to this, is going to be at 9:00 AM on residential road resurfacing. Last time we did that, the very first thing we determined was, we can talk all day long, and we're not going to get anywhere until we identify a funding source. So I would encourage everybody to really go home, talk to folks, and find out if we're going to get behind a half-cent sales tax or a 1 cent, or if we're not. And finally, and we'll, for whatever, make a decision on that, because we, we can kick formulas around, and we all know, nobody's going to be happy, 100% happy with whatever we have. The only way we're going to advance that road resurfacing is with identifying a funding source. And I, and I agree with people, if it's an ad valorem tax increase, it'll never go all the roads. So we, we need to think about that. The other thing I failed to mention, I mentioned the mayor's panel down at the resiliency summit. I thought the very, the most intriguing one was the county administrators forum. Because they were asking very, very good questions, and in my 22 years in elected government, it's the only clear, concise reading I ever heard of people that know what their job description is. Because these commissioners, I mean, these administrators are going down the list, and they were given to these proverbials, and every single administrator goes, that's what, that's an elected official decision. It's not the administrator, it's the elected, where does the money come from? That's an elected official position. That has not come from the county administrator. We can make recommendations. But I was listening over and over and over again to all these questions, and they had good insight. And what they kept saying was that sometimes their staff and staff in general would say, well, you know, this is probably going to cost too much, and, you know, we don't know if we should bring it forward or not. And all they kept saying is, that's not your call. That's the administrator, I mean, that's the elected official's call. So i- if the administrator asks for, for ideas or thoughts, and they, they, they were encouraged to bring forward their best thoughts, and then let the elected officials decide. So we, all my elected official colleagues were sitting around the table going, amen, amen. It's great to hear people that, that understand what commissioners are supposed to do. So, so with that said, Madam Attorney?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I make one comment?
Yeah.
Just as, as we are putting in thought and, and preparing for the discussion on residential road resurfacing and a funding source, and I agree with you, we can talk about it all day long until we identify a funding source. I would, my, my only word of caution would be that there is a, if, if we decide to go down this road of putting a sales tax initiative on the ballot at some point, there's a lot of legwork, a lot of homework to be done first, a lot of groundwork to be done first. And let's, don't get too far ahead of our skis on putting out there whether or not we're going to support a, you know, a, a half-cent or a full-cent initiative, whether it's three-years or five-year sunset, or a 10- or 20-year sunset. I, I would, I would suggest that we dial back a little bit and decide whether or not we are willing to support putting a local option sales tax on the, on the ballot. And then let's see where the, the information and groundwork kind of leads us that, that, you know, it looks like this is what people would be most willing to accept with these conditions. This is what people would, would support with these conditions. So before we start kind of backing ourselves into bat, into one particular position, let's just, I think we should wait and see what, what, let it be data-driven, if you will.
Sure. But again, you know, people are going to say, what are you doing about road resurfacing? And the answer's going to be, nothing. What we're doing right now, that's all we can do.
Yeah.
You know? And, and it's been going on for a long time, and the reason we're behind, as you know, is we weren't spending anything on road resurfacing for a long time. So I, I just don't want us to come in and have a workshop on road resurfacing that takes five minutes, and we drag everybody in here to do it to say, okay, well, we're going to do more, we have more money, and that's the end of it. So do we really think we're going to accomplish something at a residential road resurfacing? We're, I mean, what, other than identifying, knowing that we need a funding source, what is it that we expect to accomplish? Yes, sir?
I think there are two components. One's obviously the funding, and that's the thing. You can come up with any great formula you want, but if you don't have the money, you're not going to get there.
Right.
But the second part of it is, and I don't know whether the direction of board's changed, what I heard the last time we discussed this was some of, some of the members of the commission wanted to look at the methodology for whether it's worst to first, its density, or some other combination to do it. But it gets back to my old adage, if it isn't my road, it'll be the wrong road.
Mm-hmm. Well, and again, I know there was talk about tweaking the formula, but the last time we had this topic, everybody said, well, we talked about it, but we're not going to get anything better than what we have. I mean, I have no problem, I'm going to be here, so I'm just, I'm trying to lay out what it is we expect to accomplish when we come into these. Because I hate bringing everybody in and just looking at each other and going like, well, why are we here? You know? I hope we come in prepared with, you know, some, some initiative. I, I can tell you, I've been talking to people for years, as you have, Commissioner Kennard, you went out and did the roadshow on this, I remember. If we have a very simple set of bullets, it must do this, 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 and this, that's what you start talking about. And I've told, I've know, when I've told people what those specific bullets are, it's almost unanimous agreement, put it on the ballot. Not saying I'm for it, but why should an elected person ever have a problem with putting something on the ballot?
Right.
I mean, that's what elections are for, right? So that, that's the big question, I think, that's going to be before, so just keep that in the back of your mind. Madam Attorney, you got anything for us today?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, great. Open to the public. Does anybody here wish to speak?
You know, I stay for the whole meeting just for this.
Clock is ticking, ma'am.
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs Civic Association, number one. Citrus Springs is having a meet and greet July 21st. It's open to all candidates, no politics involved, just meet and greet the candidates. April 21st, we have our regular monthly meeting. Any of the commissioners are welcome to come. It's open to the public, okay? It starts at 7:00. The residential road resurfacing and repaving workshop, I do plan on being there, because I plan on having some people with me that feel that, you know, it's time. And I'm glad you're finding, you know, because if Mr. Oliver tries to find $13 million, like he was asked to do, he's going to really have a hard time, okay? And residents are not going to be very happy with a tax that will never go away. And that's the thing, you always promise taxes, you know, are going to go away, they never do. So that's one of the biggest things. When you get your goals presentation, the Citrus Springs Civic Association would love to have you come to one of our meetings and present. And I'm sure, because I'm also a member of the Beverly Hills Civic Association, they would also love to have you come present, okay? Different areas, but, you know, and I think it's, it's good if you get out there at the civic associations. Now, I know you guys are finally going to sell some of these buildings that you rent for a dollar a year, okay? Now, I think that's kind of nice. And I know the other month, I said, you know, we'd be willing to buy the, you know, Citrus Springs building, but you raised the price from a dollar, which is what you told us four years ago, and now I don't know if you want to sell it anymore. But if you do want to sell it, just let me know a number.
Mr. Oliver, get an appraisal.
You got a number?
Not, don't, we don't engage with the public at the podiums. Keep, keep making.
Okay. But anyhow, when I come up here, I came because the board had their meeting. When someone in the audience says, geez, from Citrus Springs, and that's not her, you know, the, it isn't always the whole membership that I'm speaking for. But the elected board, when they tell me to come on a Thursday before this meeting, I show up, or at least I try. And those were the topics we did talk about at our board meeting. So I want you to realize that. Thank you for your time and patience, and if you can give me a number, Mr. Oliver, I might be able to write you a check.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the board at this time? Any further public input?